Edgar?
Ready? Good morning, and welcome to our special meeting held on May 18th, 2021, starting at 9:00 a.m. We will start off with the call to order of the Pledge of Allegiance held by Supervisor Colin Kosmicki.
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Acknowledge certificate of posting.
I'll make that motion.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Zero, motion passes. Notice of temporary procedures for Board of Supervisors meeting, Miss Madam Vice Clerk.
Good morning Chairman and Board members, good morning community members, members of the public who are present in the chambers who wish to speak during public comment periods can raise their hand and wait to be called up to the podium. If you wish to make a comment through Zoom, please press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen. We recommend that you upgrade to the latest version of Zoom to make sure you can participate through public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Okay, any public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please press the raise your hand icon or star nine. No comments.
Okay, bring it back to the board. Our consent agenda, we will move that to the very end as we had a little bit of issue of uploading that file in a timely manner. So we will go to the consent at the end of the meeting to ensure that we are in compliance with all the governmental regulations.
Right.
Okay, now we'll go to Okay, now we'll go to our regular agenda. Our regular agenda starts off with our county clerk, auditor, recorder, register of voters. He has every hat in the world. And, you know, I just want to publicly recognize, his birthday was yesterday, or was it Saturday?
It was on Sunday.
So happy birthday. So let's go forward, and now let's get to work. Thank you, Joe Paul.
I'll go ahead and open up real brief. I just wanted to thank the board for making sure you're here, your attendance, as well as the public that's online. Again, this is a second meeting that we have, a special board meeting for budget. This is something that we've been doing every year since I've been the CIO to actually have some study sessions with the board members as well as the public to discuss the budget, to kind of go over things, and also, I think, very appropriate for the new board members to hear and educate yourself on some of these facets of the budget. So with that, our auditor, controller, Joe Paul Gonzalez, has been kind enough to provide a presentation to you concerning TEADER, what TEADER funds are, and as well as OPEB. So I want to go ahead and thank him for making himself available and presenting this information. So Joe Paul Gonzalez?
Good morning. Thank you, CIO Ranosa. Oh, Spanosa, sorry. So, in, you know, our preparations for each budget year, CIO and I get together, we talk about, hey, what are the things that we should be informing the board about? And the TEADER, the TEADER fund is something that is probably maybe new to the newest board members, you know, what it's all about, you know, history of the TEADER. I wanted to go over what the TEADER fund is, the, basically the how, the what, the where, and the when of the TEADER fund. So, the TEADER plan was the brainchild of Desmond TEADER. He was the auditor, controller for Contra Costa County. Basically, he proposed an alternate method of tax apportionment. And this alternate method allows for counties to allocate secured utility assessments and other supplemental property taxes to the property tax revenue receiving jurisdictions, which includes the county itself, cities, special districts, and the schools. And that's so that they receive a hundred percent of what the county assessor has assessed. And this was kind of, this was new, you know, back in the nineteen forties. And not every county has opted to be a TEADER plan county. So again, the county apportions, all the levies to the taxing jurisdictions, a hundred percent of the taxes, that even though we haven't collected a hundred percent, we apportion a hundred percent. And we use our tax loss reserve fund and our portion tax resource fund to do so. And in order to do that, at least in this county, in order to be able to apportion a hundred percent, the TEADER, the TEADER plan buys these delinquencies, and we earn interest, and we receive penalties. And that's how we fund the TEADER fund, through interest and penalties. So the benefits of the TEADER plan are really threefold. They simplified the whole process of the tax estimation and allocation process. It provided a stable and reliable annual property tax revenue for the schools, the special districts, the cities, and of course, the county. And the third benefit was that it was a revenue generator for the county. And so I'm going to talk about how the plan has performed over the last several years. One of the pitfalls with the TEADER plan is that during tough times, it requires a huge cash requirement to be able to buy all the purchases. And in later slides, you'll see what those requirements were. In two thousand and nine, the, Tularay County found itself in a negative cash position in the TEADER plan, and they decided to go ahead and terminate the TEADER plan because they were out of cash. They could have gone into a system of issuing tax, tax anticipation notes in anticipation of getting these tax receivables in, but they opted not to. And in my view, that probably shouldn't have happened, because the TEADER plan is a, as I mentioned, has those three benefits to, to all the taxing jurisdictions and to the county itself. So I'm going to talk about how the secured property tax and special assessment buyout, the cash flow requirements of the TEADER fund, and the TEADER delinquency revenue earnings over the years and currently. So this chart kind of shows a history from two thousand and eight to the current. You can see that the, the blue line is the total beginning property secured unpaid tax. We're over, over eight million dollars that we're holding in receivables in two thousand and eight, nine. And another, you know, and six, and over six million dollars of buyouts that we had to come up with. And so the cash needs were tremendous back then, and this, this is, you know, happens to be the year where Tularay County decided, you know what, this is not working.
Joe Paul, excuse me, quick question. How do you define the buyouts? Explain that to me.
Well, the buyout is all the property tax, you know, secured property tax that doesn't get paid in the year. You know, the December payment, and then the April payment, they don't make the payments. And it goes beyond June thirtieth. In other words, July first, boom, that's when, that's really when the buyouts occur.
Okay, thank you.
So this next chart shows the receivable balances and the annual buyout. You see the gap here between the total beginning property secured, which is the blue line, and the new buyouts. This is thirteen, fourteen, a little bit shorter period of time. You can see that the buyouts are starting to get pretty consistent, you know, around a million dollars, starting thirteen, fourteen forward. And we see a little spike in seventeen, eighteen, and it gets better in nineteen, twenty. But again, in two thousand and twenty-one, we've seen the slope is pretty, is, of increasing buyouts is, is concerning. In fact, over the previous year, the buyouts increased thirty-eight percent. This chart is only to show that the TEADER fund over the last twelve years has brought in over eleven million dollars. So it's, it's been an important revenue generator for the county. That's a, a big yellow one. This sheet shows that the new delinquency buyouts are increasing, and this is where I'm saying that, the, the last year, you can see that the slope is increasing. A little concerning, because, you know, basically, there's been more, almost five hundred thousand dollars increase in the number of receivables that we're having to buy out, because, you know, people aren't paying our taxes. I've mentioned that the cash needs, you know, back in two thousand and eight, nine, you can see that we were negative cash, negative point, two point two million dollars in cash.
Can we go back to that last slide, if I may, Mr. Chair?
This one?
Yeah. So, for, open for conversation here, just wanted to share that there, the treasurer, there, there was some forgiveness during COVID time. And I wanted to correlate kind of the timing, and as if you go back to two thousand and eight and nine, and you look at some of those, those values, that was a great recession. So you'll notice that that's when every, the bottom end filled out with housing and property tax. So you can really see how that slope is and how that correlates to time. And when you look at that last segment there, as it comes up, there's obviously a greater need for obligation with regards to this because of that. Now, we are looking at lost revenue. This is really important. This is something that auditor, controller, Joe Paul Gonzalez and I have been looking at when I first started here as a source of revenue for operations, because we, we, well, we're getting one-time money, but we haven't got something that's operation, you know, an ongoing operational that we can correlate to staffing to offset that. So this was really kind of a pretty big thing for the county to utilize this, and I want to thank the auditor's office for working with the administration to do that, as well as the board in years past. But I, but I think it's important to see that, you know, the American Rescue Act also addresses any lost revenue, that we may be able to offset those values if that money doesn't come in. So I wanted to share that with the board, that we're looking into that for the TEADER, because that is a source of revenue for the county that we're potentially maybe losing. So I just, I just wanted to highlight that for you.
One other question, Joe Paul, about the buyouts. So if, if they haven't paid it by the end of the fiscal year, it's a buyout. But we continue to pursue trying to get that receivable, and I gather, what happens, or do we? And what happens when then, you know, if they do eventually pay it, let's say in the fall, the following year? How does that work?
Well, basically, once it falls out of the current property tax role and goes into what we call the abstract, which is the, you know, into delinquency, it moves from, we call it the S-roll into the I-roll. So it's now in delinquency. And the way that they get it out is, well, they have to pay the penalty and interest associated with that. The, you know, the, we don't, we don't pursue that. It's, you know, the, it's really the taxpayer who triggers whether it stays in the current or it moves into the delinquency role.
And how does that, when I'm looking at this buyout curve, how does that affect, so if they, the following year, they do pay it, does that go a credit against the buyout or, or what? So does it catch up somehow?
Well, it reduces, well, it reduces the receivable that we're holding.
Right.
And so it doesn't affect the new buyout at all. It, it only reflects the amount of receivable that we're holding, so our receivables go down. But because they, they've taken it out of delinquency, that means we've also recognized the revenue, so we now have the cash in hand.
Right, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
But this doesn't provide any sort of incentive for people who are delinquent to not pay their taxes down the road. I just want to make sure that we're, you know, we're still in a position to recover those revenues, and we'd be, basically, we'd be advancing ourselves essentially on the delinquent funds with the expectation to recover those dollars later.
Well, I think it's something that, from a taxpayer's perspective, do you, do you want to pay ten dollars for something or twenty dollars for something? You don't want to just spend the lowest amount of money, right? So I, you know, the obligation to pay the taxes is there. I think, and that's pretty important, I think, you know, without paying any extra penalty fees or any other costs associated with that. So that's just my, my, my thought process, but Joe Paul probably can elaborate further or, or just, you know, highlight that.
It's, it's sort of like credit cards. You, you start using credit cards, you're paying eighteen percent interest, which is the rate of interest we're earning in this fund. It's not a good thing.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not.
You'd rather not be, you know.
Yeah, I understand.
Paying that interest, yeah.
But, but we're not putting ourselves in a position where we're sending a signal to the public, you know, that we have the cash. I just want to make sure we were in a position to recover the dollars later. And when you talk to, one other thing you mentioned, forgiveness, that's the state and federal driven policies?
Yeah, and I believe the attack, remember, I don't know if you recall, you weren't on board yet, the Treasurer's Association, along with the governor, delayed because of COVID, and actually deferred or, or delayed that, the timeframe, just like the regular taxes that were due, they were delayed. So I think that there was some of that as well. And again, I'm just looking at timing, and, you know, I'm, I'm not sure, I haven't actually looked at the data, but when you look at that and you look at the timing, there is, there is a correlation to that. We probably need to analyze that a little bit more, but that's kind of what I'm, I'm assuming with, with that, seeing those numbers, the way they're skewed.
Thank you. And one, one other question. Prior to the TEADER plan, or if you're not on the TEADER plan, you know, the county, the cities, they, they only get what you collect. And I gather then, if there's delinquencies and, and late payment fees, those go to, specifically to the jurisdictions, as opposed to the county, and that's where the, that's where the difference in revenue comes?
They would, they would have, yes.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to be sure.
Again, the trade-off is that they get a hundred percent instead of ninety-six percent or ninety-five percent in bad years.
Right. And I gather that over the years, in spite of the cash flow issue that can pop up, we have been, we're money ahead.
Yes, well, over the years, we've, we've made eleven million dollars in the fund since, since two thousand and eight, nine.
And the, and that, the eleven million dollars reflects the cases where we haven't been able to collect money, is that, is that?
All that is from, from revenue?
That's a net number.
Penalty revenue, yes. That's a net number.
All right, thank you.
Hence, hence the correlation with, this has been a historical trend, and, and viewing it as a source of revenue, and being able to offset operations with staffing and other things, that, that's kind of the, the premise and the thought with that.
One, one other thing, in, in the next presentation, which is the OPEB, part of those contributions actually were, a large part actually came from the TEADER fund to initiate the OPEB funds. So it's, you know, it's, it's been, you know, it's been used for that, for that purpose to pre-fund OPEB obligations. There's also, it's been used to pre-fund capital improvements, and there's a two million dollars sitting in the capital improvement fund for that purpose. It was originally designated by a prior board to sit there for the renovation of the Hall of Records Building, which is the former courthouse. And, you know, it's, it's still there for whatever purpose, you know, the board ends up, you know, using it for.
And, and the, the revenue also reflects the cost of money, because obviously, if we're advancing money, there's, there's a cost of money there that we're, you know, because we haven't received the funds, so does it reflect that as well?
Well, you know, because the fund is, is basically self-funded, we have the cash. The, the interest that we earn on an annual basis is actually interest that comes to the general fund. The general fund earns all the interest from the TEADER fund.
Okay.
So it's, you know, because, it's, it's like, you know, you know, we are, we, we have the cash, so we are able to, you know, do, buy out the receivables. If we didn't have the cash, we'd have to find a way to buy out the receivables. And that's what the tax.
But I guess my point is, is you're, you earn, you're earning some interest on that cash that you have. So if you've advanced the cash. So if you've advanced the cash to jurisdictions, then you have less cash, you know, so you're not getting the interest on that cash. So I'm just asking if that, this reflects that?
Actually, um, the, the teeter, what, what, the way that we apportion taxes is that whatever we collect in, in December, we apportion out. In April, whatever we collect, we apportion out. So it's like, something like fifty-five percent, forty, you know, um, you know, forty-plus percent in April. And then at the very end of the year, when we find out, hey, what's, you know, what hasn't been paid, at that time, that's when we make all the taxing jurisdictions whole to a hundred percent. So, um, they get a hundred percent of it at that time at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. So, so in essence, it sounds like Joe Paul, that the, the net, you know, whatever isn't made whole, the net difference goes back to the general fund in interest?
Well, um, the, the general fund is always getting the interest because we don't, we don't pre-fund them. We pay, we fund them, we make them complete at the end of the year. So really there's, you know.
Throughout the year.
Throughout the year, the, it's the general fund that's, that's earning the interest.
Yeah.
Because the money's sitting in the teeter fund, but the, but the teeter fund's interest goes to the general fund.
Got it.
Thanks, sorry, sorry to stop you there, but.
This could be a very, uh, dry subject, uh, so any questions are, are welcomed.
In essence, it's like an investment, right? And to, to make things whole and ultimately it's, you, the interest covers, you know, what we wouldn't have gotten if we didn't have the teeter fund. So it, it makes sense.
Yeah, it's, to me, it's, the, the real advantage is the service that provides the taxing jurisdictions.
Yeah, to cover their costs.
Because the, you know, the schools, they need to rely on a fixed number.
Yeah.
They can't be guessing what they might be getting. It's, it's not good, uh, it's not good budgeting practice.
Yeah.
Again, in this slide eleven, you, you, we can see that the cash, the cash needs were two point four million dollars and, uh, we were negative two, two point four million dollars. So where did we get the money? Well, because, um, the teeter fund, um, has its funds in the, the county pool, the county treasurer provides temporary transfers to the teeter fund and charges interest. So if we're, you know, uh, you know, uh, having a cash need, we have to pay interest on it. And, um, so that the other jurisdictions are not, uh, are not, um, deficient in, in its interest earnings. Here, uh, we have, for twenty twenty-one, we have two point eight million dollars in, in the beginning of the fiscal year, our cash balances. This, uh, this one covers the cash needs for the, for the year since, uh, which is the two point eight million dollars. You can see that the unpaid at the year end, the I-roll, that's the delinquency roll. And then the blue, the paid within the year. So about two million dollars is, is what, two point eight million dollars is what, uh, the cash need is. So that two point eight million dollars is composed of one point six for the, uh, secured property tax and special assessments buyout, that's an estimate. And one point two for the teeter loss reserve fund. So, you know, assuming the way that we've oper, that we've administered the teeter fund is that, uh, it's really based upon, you know, economic conditions. So if, if things are starting to, uh, uh, you know, go bad in the economy, we're going to have tremendous cash need. So we don't declare, uh, we don't declare revenues, uh, for the general fund to, so that we can have the cash to be able to, um, cover the needs.
Yeah, so for clarity purposes, we do not, we, we usually pull back. You know, if we allocate three hundred or four hundred or five hundred thousand for the budget in a, in a good year or a year that we think is going to be fine. Again, it's a crystal ball, you look at it and you project for budget. But, you know, uh, with COVID, we've been very cautious over the last few years. And cognizant of that, and that's going to be presented, Gabriel's going to present, um, you know, the overall budget for the, for the county here in a little bit. But basically, you know, we're a little bit more conservative. And, and this is a good example, we usually pull back. We usually do a little bit, but not quite as much as we would normally in a good year. So I just wanted to share that with the board.
Ray, are the, uh, or Joe Paul, are the, the teeter loss reserve fund, is that part of the reserves that we talk about? Or is that a separate fund?
No, it's a, it's a, it's a separate, it's not even part of the general fund. It's completely outside of the general fund.
Thank you.
So this year for twenty twenty-one, we budgeted three hundred thousand dollars and that will be transferred over to the general fund. We, we expect that, um, for twenty-one, twenty-two, we're, we're going to, um, we was going to talk to Gabriel to let him know that we feel that we can, um, recognize six hundred thousand in revenue to, you know, help improve the, the budget for the county. So, um, a- again, these, these one-time, a- as I mentioned, the teeter, the teeter can be, can be run with, uh, tax anticipation notes. Some counties do that. They empty out the, the, the teeter completely. And everything is run off of leveraging, borrowing from, from others. Um, and, um, this, this is an option. We, you know, we haven't done that. But, you know, we really haven't, uh, experienced the need to, to do something different. And that's the end of that presentation, if there's any other questions.
Can, can you go back to the allocation of funding for budget? I didn't see that slide when you were talking to it.
Well, this is the, 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 just simply what we have already budgeted in twenty-two.
So you just, you just stated it, it wasn't right on the record, yeah.
Mr. Chair? Thank you. Um, so what you're saying is theoretically, we could transfer six hundred thousand dollars over to the general fund, but then we have to backfill the two point, was it two point eight?
Well, no, because the, the fund has the cash now.
Okay.
It's, you know, we don't have to go out and borrow.
Yeah, got it.
At this time.
Yeah.
But if you, if you said, hey, look, we want to, we want to take all the cash out of there, because there's a tremendous need, we could do that.
Yeah.
And we could go out and get, uh, you know, get funding, you know, from, uh, you know. And they do, this, they do this regularly for, you know, school districts might do it for, in anticipation, if they're not a teeter county, anticipation of, of taxes coming in. Or even if they are a teeter county, anticipation of taxes coming in, because they need, they need, uh, they have a higher cash need earlier in the year. They know they're going to get it by the end of the year, so they're covered. But it costs money to do that.
And then just broadly, how do we, with the teeter fund, how do we best prepare ourselves for a, a major downturn? I know you said we've been cautious, um, with COVID. I'm more concerned about the big, the big one, basically. Potentially being around the corner with, you know, the housing market the way it is right now and the stock market the way it is right now. Personally, I'm very, very concerned about the potential for a major economic downturn. And so I just, for me, I want to make sure that we're, um, keeping that in mind.
And I think, and I think what, what we have in reserves, I think, is, is that, that's what it's there for. Um, if, 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 um, and that's the reason why it's a very conservative view on things. I think what, what Joe Paul is mentioning though, is that there are other counties and there is an option with this board to move forward with using some of those funds if, if you want to, uh, for something big. If, if there's a need for it. But again, you got to keep in mind and be very cautious about that exact thing, about what, um, what does the economy look like right now? And there's a lot of other things, a lot of other facets. And, and that's the reason why we've been very conservative with COVID, because it's just kind of, we're not a hundred percent sure still. We're still not out of the woods yet, so, yeah.
I, I think, uh, I think we have been administering the, the teeter fund very conservatively, because we're using, we're using penalty, uh, earnings and we're holding those earnings in the account to buy new receivables. And, and, um, I think that's, um, that's pretty conservative.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll move on to.
Well, we'll pass it to the chair and let him open it up for, um, for questions. Pablo?
Is there any, uh, public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please press the raise your hand icon or star nine on your phone. No comments.
Uh, bring it back to the board. We'll, uh, go to number two, the, uh, receive a PowerPoint presentation of other post-employment benefits.
Okay. Other post-employment benefits, OPEB. This is really a presentation related to the actuarial valuation that was done dated June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. The next, uh, valuation is, is due on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. So, uh, that's coming up very soon. So some of these numbers are not current, but I'm going to show you what we currently hold against those, you know, non-current numbers. So you can draw some inferences from that. So, uh, how, how did we ever, um, get into having now an OPEB obligation? Well, it really had to do with a resolution back in nineteen, uh, ninety-three that, uh, the board said, okay, we're going to offer healthcare benefits to employees. But if you do that, if you do so under CalPERS, you must do what, uh, what you do for active, uh, employees for retirees. Over a twenty-year period, it has to be the same. And so those twenty years have, have come and gone. And that's the reason why we have a, uh, contribution that we make, uh, for employees, the same contribution we make on behalf of retirees because of this, uh, original obligation. But then we left CalPERS in two thousand seventeen. But we left CalPERS because, you know, the healthcare rates were, were going, you know, through the roof and we thought we could do better on our own. And, um, you know, we, we proved ourselves wrong. And, um, so, but when we did that, I, the commitment was made to treat, uh, retirees as if we were under the PemCA, under the, under the CalPERS law that requires retirees to be, uh, treated as active employees for healthcare benefits. The, um, let's see, uh, since non-Medicare eligible retirees are typically much older than active employees, their actual medical costs are typically higher than for, for actives. The, um, GASB seventy-five and the actuarial standards of practice require that an implied, the implied subsidy, that's the difference between what, um, what the retirees who are older, the, the difference in the premium that actives are paying, they're paying actually a higher premium because they are subsidizing the older retirees. If we didn't have a retiree plan, the premiums would be significantly lower. And that's what, uh, the implied subsidy is. In later slides, you'll see what it is. So, um, under the June thirtieth, um, two thousand and nineteen valuation, there are two hundred and sixty eligible, um, retirees. And there are three hundred and eighty-three active employees earning service eligibility for future healthcare benefits. An employee is eligible for the county contribution towards medical coverage provided they retire from the county and CalPERS, typically on or after the age fifty with five years of CalPERS service credit. So you, you know what these are, these are the health contribution rates. For single, they're five fifty, two-party, uh, ten fifty and family thirteen fifty. The retired is exactly the same. But the retired Medicare eligible is seventy percent of the, of the contribution, the cap. And that's why it's three eighty-five for single and, and so on.
Joe Paul?
Yes.
I know I'm probably stealing someone's thunder, but, um, do we see any change in healthcare in the future? Um, I know that's been a big topic throughout, uh, the county and really throughout the country. But I know that we've been, uh, having conversations about possibly looking at the different, uh, vehicle to use. Is this the appropriate time to bring that up or do you want to wait till we dive into the budget?
Um, we, we can just highlight that briefly since we're here. Um, I can tell you that HR and Edgar is here at Edgerton, Alaska. He's our deputy CIO, he is here. They are missioned to actually work with, um, the unions and, uh, look at moving to CalPERS, um, healthcare. Just as an FYI, they are working on that. And, uh, your board will be seeing something, um, before you, before September. Last I've heard with Alvia, it was September, but it looks like CalPERS is, uh, willing to actually have something even before that. Uh, my concern is timing, huh, and, uh, that's the reason why. So those numbers that you see there, uh, the single, the second party and the family, uh, are very, are a lot closer to what, um, currently, the current figures are with CalPERS. Obviously, next year is going to be different, the rates are going to change. And I think one of those rates in the next couple of months, when they'll be published?
End of June.
End of June is when they'll be published, within the next couple of months or next month. And, um, we'll have a better idea of what those figures are and comparable to what we have on our caps, so.
And then just looking at, uh, the, and I didn't want to give anybody any false impressions, but, uh, the idea of savings per county and per employee, if we went to CalPERS, what would?
It's approximately six, and Edgar did the analysis, it's approximately six hundred and sixty thousand dollars to the employees, savings to the employees if we moved, as of today, with the figures of today. So obviously, it may not be exactly that figure, but it'll be a lot closer, uh, with regards to the savings for next year, because rates.
Theory, what that does is it increases their take-home pay per paycheck. So in theory, they will be seeing, they, if we went down this route and if it was frozen from today, I mean, there's a lot of variables.
Right.
But they would take home more money in their paycheck because they're paying less for the medical insurance.
That is correct.
Safe to say?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Sorry, sorry about that.
Yes. Oh, and when, so you said, and June, the rates, what, what kind of timing are we potentially talking about for actually this going, being effective for our employees? What, what kind of timing are we potentially talking about for actually this going, being effective for our employees?
It'll, it'll be January 2, January of 2022.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
The, the rates actually get charged to the employees beginning in December. Because we always charge a month in advance before, you know, the actual coverage. Okay, so the employee health contribution for those hired on or after the effective date below retiring under the CalPERS may continue coverage and receive the Pemka minimum required contribution. So here's the different groups. Here's the dates. If employees were hired prior to these dates, in each of these groups, they're considered classic members, you might want to say. They receive the full contribution that you, that you saw in previous screens. If they come in hired after these dates, they receive the Pemka minimum, which I think, believe, I believe this year is $141 a month. Which is significantly different than the contributions that we make on behalf of classic retirees and employees. So the average age of an active employee is 44.1 years?
I'm sorry, Madam Vice Chair, if I may. Can you go back that slide? I'm sorry, and I, I stepped out for a second. But did you cover the Pemka minimum and what that value is today? And the difference? Okay. It's subs, it's substantially different. Just wanted to make sure. It's a huge difference with regards to obligation.
In fact, so, you know, the Pemka minimum is $141. So you could see, $141 doesn't really go far when you compare it to the actives or retiree, single, 550. That's a significant difference in contribution.
Thank you.
So yeah, the average age of employees, 44 years. And they have an average past service years of 7.5 years. Retirees, the average age of retirees is 67.7 years. And they retired on average at 858.1. I just thought I'd throw that in because it's kind of interesting. It's, it's all, it's very relevant to the actuarial evaluation. This is important information for the, for the valuation. So GASB 75, Governmental Accounting Standards Board. This is a relatively new statement. Prior to this statement, 45, we had GASB 43 and 45, which had a, had a different perspective of how, how reporting is done. It was done mostly from a funding perspective versus from an accounting perspective. And this is now an accounting perspective statement. So the valuation, you know, the main purpose of the valuation is to determine what the OPEB liability is from an actuarial standpoint. And to determine what the actuarially determined contribution will be for the next two fiscal years. That's what in, in June 30th of 21, we'll be seeing that, that report will be, you know, will be presented to the county. And it will cover fiscal years 20, 22, 23, and 23, 24. So with the valuation right now, the implied subsidy for the, for the actuarial liability, and the actuarial liability is not only the unfunded liability, but the current service cost and future service costs. So you have three components in the actuarial liability. And the implied subsidy is, is imputed at $8.3 million. And so at a 7% discount rate, the actuarial liability is $33 million for OPEB. So that's really the present value of projected benefits. That's, that's what, that's what you would need today. Put in, put in a bank and insert it, earn you 7%. From an actuarial standpoint, in this picture and time, this is what you need to cover all future benefits for actives and retirees. So, let's see. The OPEB liability, that's in GASB 45 that was, that was referred to the actuarial accrued liability. Reflect, only looking at the, the costs associated with past service for current employees and retirees that we did not capture while they were earning, while they were employed. Because this is a benefit that they receive because they earned it while they were employed, even though we didn't capture the costs back then. Because we didn't, you know, we didn't know. We didn't have the, you know, the GASB standards. So in total, under this plan, there's 28, $28.3 million in OPEB liability. That's just, again, just past service. So the actuarial accrued liability of 28 million. But then we have, or at the time that this valuation was made, the value of the assets was $25 million. What we have in the OPEB trust, what we have with, with the SEBERT, with CalPERS, and what we have, the other part that we have with PARs in the 115 trust. So for past service, we have an unfunded net OPEB liability of $3.3 million there. So using those numbers, we're 88% funded. So the actuarially determined contribution, that's the amount that we got to have paid annually. That's, that's how much we, we need, that's computed using this valuation. For example, in 1920, we had to have, you know, our actuarially determined contribution is, is $991,000. 2021, it's a million nine. And so over the years, before it was an annual, annual, annual actuarially determined contribution, it was a annual required contribution under GASB 45. These were the amounts that were determined and that we paid. Where some of them were not paid. And we actually, you know, during, during some tough times, we pulled money out. And we actually pulled money out to pay for retiree healthcare, $1.3 million. And we made the contribution in 1718 that was not budgeted. You could see that we've been consistent about making our annually determined contributions or relatively consistent. So at the meeting of July 23rd on 2019, the Board directed that half of the OPEB funds that were in the SEBERT, the CalPERS trust, be transferred to the PARs 115 trust. So the idea was to put half in, in CalPERS and half in PARs, see how they do. You know, you know, what, you know, how they perform with relatively the same level of risk. So on, so there was $12,714 that were approximately in each, each of the trusts on August 14. So in the CalPERS trust, the SEBERT, in 2009, with the initial contribution of $2.3 million, we've made additional contributions along the way, about 13 million. We've taken out 1.3 million. Expenses have been very low in the, in the CalPERS, the SEBERT of $172,000. Earnings, investment earnings has been an amazing, almost $14 million in earnings. And that's because we kind of had the luck of the Irish and, you know, invested the money at the right time. And it was, it was just very, very good timing. So the total assets in the trust is $15.7 million. Annualized internal weighted return of 8.38%. Pretty good. PARs just, just started in 2019. On that $12.7 million has earned almost $4 million, 3.9 million. The total assets is $16,595,000. So the annual growth rate, 17.76% on that money. So as of December 30th, 2020, comparing net performance, you could see that in the first column, the one-year net returns was 14.14% against the CalPERS, the SEBERT at 3, 13.31%. The PARs is net of fees. And CalPERS is also net of fees. So it's net to net. So you could see that as of December 31st, PARs has been outperforming the CalPERS.
Joe Paul, question. How, how is the money invested? You say relatively same risk, but with this kind of a return, obviously, we're not seeing the 1%, you know, plus that we're seeing at the, you know, from the treasurer's account. So how is it invested?
Well, basically, 65% equities, 35% fixed. So, you know, bonds. So they don't put anything in cash, so it's.
And, and is there a reason why? I mean, we're very conservative, obviously, with the treasury money. But this is a much more, you know, much more aggressive approach, one that, you know, someone of a younger age, 65, 35, would be doing. Why the, the big difference in, in philosophy and approach? I'm just curious.
Well, the, the CalPERS trust is, is at the same risk level as the, I'm sorry, the PARs trust is the same risk level as the, the CalPERS trust. It, it was a strategy one, which, you know, strategy one, most agencies were using that strategy to, to catch up. Because, you know, we didn't, you know, we, we didn't fund this thing when we should have been funding it, when people were earning, earning the benefit. And so that was the reason why, you know, CalPERS had, had that, that strategy. There are more conservative strategies that, that we might very well be looking at for the future. But depending upon what you, what the Board wants to do. And so that's what we're going to talk about later on. So that was December 31st. But by the first quarter of March 31st, 2021, the returns were significantly different. So the PARs trust had 44% return in that quarter. That's pretty amazing. And then the SEBERT had 36%. Pretty darn good. They're very comparable. But as I mentioned, the level of risk is about the same. So what's the difference? The difference is the investment managers.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. This is obviously a short example, or, you know, it's one year. It's, it's, do you still feel confident that the split 50/50 is the most prudent? You know, obviously, we're seeing PARs as performing better in the last year. But that might, you know, might be different next year or the year after that. So as a Board, I don't know what might be, you know, and I think you said you're probably going to get into that. But, okay, I'll let you go. Thank you.
Okay, so going back to the actuarial valuation, remember that our OPEB actuarial accrued liability is 28 million. But the present, present value of the assets today, or as of March 31st, are 32 million. That means from a past service only, okay, not current or future, are funded, we're, we're funded 114% because of the returns.
And one thing I wanted to highlight, Mr. Chair, if I may. There was a prior slide that had the years that were outlined. Right after the Great Recession or approximately in that timeframe, where we were putting in 3 million, 2 million during the toughest time. And we were just trying to catch up and get close to, I think it was 70, 80% funded. Because that was one of the initiatives with the Board back then, was to try to fund this as, as much as possible. Because prior employees, or prior, they were not funding for, for their future retirement. It was on the, really on the backs of the last decade or so of the county at that point in time. So, so there was a lot of money that was actually infused during the difficult time. And then at that point, we just needed to get staffing. And then you saw that drop off, where we didn't put as much money into it. But this point here, I think, is really appropriate that the way things are going with the economy, stock market, the markets themselves, it's incredible to see this number where it's at today. Just I wanted to share that. I think it was, because we were, we were struggling, or the county was struggling, I think, 10, 15 years ago to get funded, so.
One thing I want to remind the Board here is that this is using an old number. This is the old OPEB, the actuarial valuation is that 28 million. I can't tell you what it's going to be once the new valuation comes out. This is, this is kind of comparing apples and oranges because they're different years, really.
A question. When did you expect the new valuation to come out?
June 30th is the measurement date, June 30th, 2021. Probably, you know, a month or so after. Okay, so, and now the actuarial liability, that, that's a 33 million. That includes all three components, past service, current, future, for actives and retirees. In the old valuation dated June 30th, 19, that compared to the actuarial value of the assets, which is add CalPERS and add PARs together, there's $32 million there on, on, on March 31st. So from, you know, from, from that standpoint, we're, you know, we're only short $800,000. And, you know, in that snapshot in time, that would be, that's, that's a pretty amazing thing. We're almost, well, 90% funded for future benefits, too. Of course, that assumes, the number of employees doesn't change. The, you know, retirees doesn't change. Um, of course, that assumes, the number of employees doesn't change, the, you know, retirees, uh, doesn't change, so.
And I think, if I may as well, just to add, I think some of the, the work that's been done by the board, as well as some of the obligations with PIMCA minimums, I think that has also changed significantly. So those are, those are key elements, too, to put into that formula that we're, we're now kind of seeing, there's a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel, or it's a little bit more, um, easier to manage, I guess. Um, and, and we're seeing, um, some better numbers. But if those numbers weren't cha- or weren't addressed, um, I think these numbers would be pretty far off again, um, i- if that weren't the case.
Yeah, and, and I think the big, the biggest point is that we have these caps, right? That were put in place some years ago that are fixed. And there's a lot of pressure right now because those caps are, you know, they're low compared to the cost of healthcare now. So, there's, you know, there's, the, the, this is kind of a snapshot, but those pressures are going to increase, and, and your board is going to have to make decisions that will, that may or may not affect these caps.
And that was what I was referring to by the board, um, that part of it was the cap part, uh, the cap portion of that, which I think is important to say, thank you for bringing that up, and then, you know, the, the PIMCA minimum. So I, you know, I, I think those are really good comments, um, that were brought up about that. Um, but I think, uh, the, um, chair had mentioned a few minutes ago about what the plan is to do, to look at other ways to save or cut costs, and going with CalPERS is a really, I think, huge way. And actually, that figure is six, six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar savings to the employees. So that's a significant savings to the employees in the snapshot of time today, so I just wanted to, to share that point as well.
So, what, what we, what we're doing actually in this year as well, and the next year, we're going to draw all our retiree healthcare costs from the trust. We want to, um, relieve the general fund of the, of that responsibility of having to pay that. So that relief is a signi- significant number, um, you know, over two million dollars, uh, close to three million dollars, um, for retiree healthcare. Um, PARs earn eight hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars more than the CalPERS trust did in the same period of time, with the, starting with the same amount of money. Um, relatively the same, the same amount of risk. Uh, so, your, your board, not at this meeting, but your board at a future meeting can direct, uh, the auditor to, um, move everything that we have in the CalPERS trust into the PARs trust, because I, because I think, you know, the proof's in the pudding, performance is everything. So, PARs has performed, um, outperformed the CalPERS trust, they got better investment managers, that's bottom line.
Mr. Chair?
Um, you're the expert on this, so I definitely, um, you know, great recommendation. I, I, has there been consideration of weaning ourselves toward PARs? Just because these funds tend to fluctuate from year to year when you analyze mutual funds, stock market trusts, um, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars in cash is a lot, but I thought it was like fourteen percent versus thirteen percent. So it wasn't overwhelmingly, uh, different. So I'm just wondering if that was under consideration, like a seventy-five, twenty-five split, and then maybe a hundred percent the following year?
You know, it, it, you know, we haven't even really talked about it.
Yeah.
Um, it just, it just seems to me that when, you know, when all things are equal and, uh, or about equal, uh, and you have two different, you know, income-producing, uh, trusts, hopefully, income-producing, and, um, that if the, if PARs are outperforming, nine hundred thousand dollars pays for a fair number of, of employees. And so, you know, I, e- even if we decided, hey, we want to lower the amount of risk now that we're getting close to being funded, so that we, you know, uh, ha- increase the amount of, of fixed instruments. So we might even consider turning it around to sixty-five percent fixed, thirty-five percent equities. Uh, because we want to protect the corpus of what we have in, in the, in the trust. But that's all dependent upon what you decide, what you want to do with contributions. Cause the minute that you change a contribution, um, even a hundred dollars, that's going to increase the liability for a million dollars.
Yeah.
Because it has an effect both on, uh, not for, not only for the actives, but whatever you do for the actives, you must do for the retirees. So, there's, there's kind of a, a conflict, right? You, you know, my inclination is, hey, let's, let's, let's keep it safe, let's, let's look at, uh, you know, what we've earned so far, let's keep it, we, we've now paid the obligation. But unfortunately, you have a lot of demands. One of the demands is, is retaining employees, and, you know, employees are finding a much better deal, um, in other counties because their, their premiums are significantly lower, uh, than they are in Assembly and County. So I, you know, that's, you know, that's a, that's really a policy question that you, you know, the board will have to wrestle with. But, um, you know, I'm just, I'm just here to kind of present a picture in time.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I had a question, Joe Paul, so how does this compare to like, and it's, and it's a reference point, it's rough, but I can't, I, I remember, like, even through, um, the start of the lockdowns and stuff, Monterey County suffered greatly, and part of it was because of their, their formula that was very risky. Uh, or to a certain extent, they, they, they gave really good benefits, uh, and the liability was so high that they had to make the decision and lay off a lot of people. So to me, if you're, if you want security, you know, you, you got to go in the direction where you don't, your risk is lower. And, and, and I think a hundred percent makes sense, if that's, that's safer, then why, why, why not?
That's definitely an option, no doubt about it, um, it's, it is an option. But, uh, Monterey County, for example, they don't provide the rich retiree benefits that we do. They only provide the PIMCA minimum for the county, for retirees.
For retirees.
So they do that one forty-one, uh, a month for retirees.
However, there, um, there's a lot of other things that, um, it's very costly for them, that they haven't addressed either, uh, from, from a health, uh, perspective as well, so that's, that's very expensive, too, as well, for active employees.
Um, and Mr. Chair, a couple, a question, and do we know, and I know this is going to change depending on what we decide as far as, you know, the, like you said, the monies that's going to be allocated going forward. But when we look at, you know, to Supervisor Medina's question earlier, you know, medical care continues to go up. Um, what is, what is over, what's the past history in terms of the increase per year? Cause obviously, not taking any, anything else into account, if it's going up nine percent per year, or ten percent, or whatever it is, unless we at least make that amount, we're always going to, we're getting behind. So I'm curious about that, and, um, and yeah, I just, a, a comment, you know, kind of agreeing with you. I mean, obviously, we've gotten a tremendous return here, forty percent, thirty-six percent. That's not sustainable, I mean, you're not, you're not going to continue to get that kind of return. Over ten years, it's eight, nine percent, which is about, about where it is long-term average historically, when you're in the stock market, et cetera. But I do think we have to be careful, because we, we can't expect to get that kind of return forever. And it could, you know, not likely, but it could go the other way, and then we suddenly are in a world of hurt all of a sudden, so anyway. But I am curious about what kind of a increase do we need to hit, on average, you think, in order to just stay at least ahead of the game?
Uh, Supervisor Tiffany, honestly, I, I don't focus on that, I, uh, as kind of the, the, um, the, the OPEB administrator of the, of the trust. The rate of change is zero, from my perspective, because we have a cap. That's it, we don't go beyond it. So, healthcare costs really, you know, in, as the increases, is, you know, part of the administrative office, you know, that's, that's what they're looking at, and so.
So it's all driven by whatever we decide here, if we decide we're going to change the cap.
Exactly.
Then that's what's the key.
That's it.
Yeah.
But it has a humongous impact on our, um, liability down the road, on front of liabilities. That, that can, I mean, like, was brought out, one hundred, we did an actuarial study, what, we looked at a different evaluations, and one hundred dollars equals like one million dollars or so change in, in, in our obligation, so that's a significant.
But the trade-off is, is we are below where many other counties are in terms of, in terms of, or at least some, in terms of benefits.
Well, it's, well, it depends, it depends on how you look at it.
You factor in caps.
For that piece of it, but when you're talking about benefit in general, we have a very rich benefit for retirees.
For retirees, so it depends on how you look at it.
It depends how you look at it, so, yeah.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
But, you know, whatever you, whatever you decide to do, if, you know, if, if you wanted to, um, increase the cap, that, you know, that's not really, um, computed in, in this, in this valuation. You know, there's, uh, the budget office will tell you, hey, this is how much it's going to cost to increase the hundred bucks for the actives. But I, you know, we'll go ahead and, and tell you how much that hundred bucks does to the OPEB, uh, liability. And it changes significantly.
I may, Mr. Chair, as well, um, I think Supervisor Cosmic, he brings up a good point. That was my concern, uh, was maybe looking at things and evaluating. We, we started off with PARs with the small amount, and then, uh, we evaluated it, and then, uh, the auditor and administration, we discussed it, we said, let's do fifty-fifty, and let's really take a look at it again, so that was kind of a second step in this process. I think it's totally, it's completely up to your board, maybe we can do seventy-five percent and evaluate that in a year or two, and then do a full hundred if, if the numbers are, are working out. I mean, that's something that your board will make that decision, um, I think it's a good point. Um, but I also think, from an auditor's perspective, you're leaving money on the table as of right now, uh, pretty significant dollars if we wait too long as well, so.
Yeah, cause it, you know, if the risk is the same, you know, why, why wouldn't you want to put it a place that's actually, you know, earning more, uh, you know, more bang for your buck, if, if the risk is exactly the same?
Mr. Chair?
And again, I'm not a, an accounting expert, but those numbers are so large, when you're talking forty, thirty percent, that to me, that there's an anomaly there on some level, so it's not, and that's why I, I said maybe another year, maybe not at fifty-fifty, but that anomaly might flip the other way, you know, it might be.
Oh, there's no question.
Twenty percent CalPERS, nine percent PARs, and then we're like, well, what do we do now, so, that's all, thank you.
Well, I think, I think what will happen is, while, you know, the, everybody's talking about a correction in, in the stock market within the next two months. That means, well, who knows, who knows what, what the degree of the correction will be, but it's, they're thinking that it might be significant. Well, obviously, the assets are overvalued right now, that's why we're having these, these, you know, unreal returns. But if the level of risk is the same, and things go bad, but they have been managing differently, you should expect the same type of result. In other words, when things go bad, the, the amount of loss should be less with PARs than it should be for CalPERS because of the way that it's being invested.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking, is to a certain extent, inflation, the cost of everything, healthcare going up, I don't see government, you know, and to a certain extent, it's kind of like CalPERS, right? You, measuring CalPERS management versus PARs, it's been wiser from the PAR side, or, you know, better management. So by default, the system plays out a lot of what, what is the actual, what it was going to give you the best return. And PARs seems to be the better manager by default, unless they change their ways, unless CalPERS gets better, which I don't see that happening anytime soon, then, then really, you're hedging your bets against a, a more secure asset with, with PARs. And, and if, if things get really crazy, then really, it's, I could see that thirty-six percent to be pretty continuous, at least for a little while until things stable, stabilize.
Well, I think, you know, you have to look at the long, the long haul. You're not going to get thirty-six or forty percent in a given year, but if we look at the chart over a ten-year period, it's eight to nine percent. That's historically about what, if you invest in the stock market and you keep your money in there, that's about what you're going to get. So, as long, I mean, we have to decide as a board, but as long as we, you kind of stay the course, don't try to time the market and this and that,
Yeah.
um, in the long haul, you're going to be okay. I mean, obviously, the people that pulled out all their money, you know, after the big downturn, they didn't see the huge increase, so they, you know, they took, they took that hit. But if you keep your money in there and you stay the course, anyway, that's just my point of view, but.
No, it's, it's, that's, that's exactly my feelings.
Well, to a certain extent, it's dependent upon the, like, the law of averages, right, they say, right, so there's, you're going to hope that things go according to trends. I have a hard time believing with the way that, that our national government's working right now, that things are going to get better. And that's just my assumption, so, but that's my personal opinion, either way, PARs seems to be just the wiser choice.
Mr. Chair?
And maybe I, if it was on a prior slide, do we have, so we analyzed nine, nineteen, December nineteen to current, do we have long-term fund performance analysis, you know, prior to going to fifty-fifty?
Oh, yeah, yes.
I think that would be more relevant than just looking at.
That's, that's kind of what I showed you in, in the, uh, in the, in the, uh, the Seabird. You know, it, it started in two thousand nine, and it shows, you know, each of the contributions, but the internal rate of return is, is, is over eight percent. So that's, we know that consistently, they have been, uh, you know, they, you know, that they've been invested in the stock market. They, you know, they've done, they've done pretty well.
PARs?
No.
No, it was, it was CalPERS, eight percent. Go back to that slide, um, go back to the slide.
That's relevant to the conversation.
Let me show you this slide right here, see over ten years?
Yeah, I couldn't see this very well, I'm sorry.
The net performance on, on March thirty-first, um, is eight point seven nine for PARs, and seven point seven six.
Okay.
For CalPERS.
Thank you, yeah, I missed it because it was smaller, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
First of all, Joe Paul, I'd like to say thank you very much, it's a very informative, um, presentation that you gave us. Um, and then kudos to you on that ninety-eight percent being funded on our liability, because that's an outstanding number. I mean, we really have to toot our horn, and so, thank you very much. Um, you know, not many places can say that, that they're that high in terms of funding. When I was a trustee for the Hollis School District, that was always a battle that we had in terms of meeting that obligation, that ongoing obligation. Um, and I didn't see a PowerPoint presentation in, attached to it, so can we get that, this one, sent to us? Uh, with the glasses.
No, it wasn't in there, because, yeah, I was.
With the glasses, I'm trying to adjust to, you know, the, the font, and it's just not working for me, so I'd appreciate it. And I'm not really a numbers person, so I'd like to go back and look at it. Um, and then, on that last page, you had a recommendation, when do you want us to direct you, uh, to move the funds? Will you be coming back at a later date?
Yeah, I'll come back at a later date, I, you know, I wanted to, uh, I wanted to come back with the, the new valuation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but that'll be probably July or August, probably August. Um, but, uh, for, if, if, for example, if the, if, if you guys are really interested in, in curtailing the amount of risk, and you guys say, hey, you know what, let's protect it, let's change the strategy. You know, I, I'd like to hear that, because then, I, you know, I can go ahead and, um, begin discussions to see, you know, what I need to do in order to, uh, change the strategy, you know, at this time.
Ultimately, Joe Paul, you know, I look at it, you know, we're, um, we sit up here, looking at policy, looking at a lot of different, uh, things, but you're in the trenches, you're there every day, and you really, uh, look at the step, analyze it, and you also have fifty-seven colleagues throughout the state that, uh, help you come to your decision. What is your opinion? When you look at everything, deep down, your gut feeling, and, you know, that's what you're paid for. So, so what is it you would direct to us?
Well, you know, I, it, it really is, it's dependent upon what your board wants to do.
But once again, Joe Paul, it's, it, I'm asking you're not the board, what, what they want, what is your opinion? You are a, uh, You are a valued employee of San Bernardino County, you've been with us for, is it sixteen years or twenty years? I forget what it is.
Over twenty.
Prior to that, you were a CPA, you have that knowledge in your head. So what would you direct us, and then we can make a decision based on your direction?
And then to add to that, you're so smart, you know, we're, we're wise enough to understand, when you give us a recommendation that is sound for the, for the county, at least two of us are gonna jump on that, so.
No pressure. Well, you know, I worked for a CPA for.
I know you did, that's why I ask.
Uh, you know, I, I did not, you know, I did never went and got certified because I didn't think I needed to.
Likewise.
So, you know, I, I, I really don't wanna tie the board's hands, because by, by, by.
We'll call you later, okay, we'll, we'll call you later.
My inclination is really, hey, I, I'd like to protect what we have.
Okay, so what would you do?
Given the, given, given the commitment.
But I wanna hear it, I don't wanna just.
Given the commitment that the board has made, hey, we've, we're living up to this commitment. We can, we can ask Highmark Capital, they're, they're, they're the investment advisor, to look at the other strategies, and I'll bring them to you.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest, is actually have Highmark come in and present those, the people that are actually doing the investing, they have a tremendous amount of knowledge. That was my, that would've been my recommendation, that's what I was gonna share with you earlier, Mr. Chair.
So I could bring the other strategies to the board of, you know, if, if, you know, 'cause, to reduce the amount of risk, and at the same time, you know, not tying the hat, the, the board's hands for this, for decision-making concerning, you know, healthcare. So, I, I can work on that and, and bring an item to the board for your consideration.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And, and just a suggestion, maybe if you give us three, four recommendations, you know, if you, if you, if you go down the road of hundred percent pars, or if you, this is your level of risk, you know, similar to how we rely on the county council. If we have a few recommendations and have laid out, you know, level of risk for each option, I think that might, if you're not, if you're hesitant to get, tell us exactly, you know, recommendation, 'cause I get where you're coming from, then if we go down that route, then you feel like all that pressure's on you. But if we have several recommendations and lays out the level of your, your expert knowledge of what that risk is and taking those routes, that might be the best all-around direction. Thank you.
I could, yeah. Right, and, excuse me, Mr. Chair, I mean, you could look at alternatives like taking a, all of it, or a chunk of it that we've already have in the bank, put that at a lower risk, and then future contributions are at the higher risk. You know, there's different ways to look at it. We don't have to suddenly go a hundred percent into a much more conservative approach. We could do some kind of a hybrid, you know, obviously, but those are things that we'd wanna look at, I would think.
Of course. Would you also want to, and this is really what I was waiting for, the, the valuation, as part of that discussion, we might wanna talk at, what happens if we change the level of contribution? And if you change that level of contribution, how will that affect your, you know, your liability? And, you know, what's that gonna cost the county? You know, that's, it's a rela, it's very, very related to this discussion.
I, I'm curious, I assume there's no, you know, guidelines that were, that were dictated by that says you have to be a certain level of conservative, I mean, I mean, the, again, the treasury, we're in basically fixed income, we're getting, earning very low interest, and maybe that's required by
That's required by government.
for example, this, this is totally, totally up to us, but, and I'm also just curious, maybe when you come back, what are the other, what are other counties doing? You know, obviously, we, we may lead the pack right now in terms of our return because of what we're doing, I don't know. Maybe a lot of the other counties are taking the same approach so far.
I can tell you from the CIOs Association, there have been a lot of counties actually moving money into pars. And a lot of counties, I shouldn't say a lot, but there are counties that are doing a hundred percent into pars. And there has been an ongoing evaluation with different counties, and it's been definitely taken in a, in a high regard, and that's why it, you know, it's been kind of an exodus to some extent.
And, and the meeting that you hosted a couple weeks ago, did this come up at all?
Well, it was, no, OPEB was not a, one of the items on the, you know, on the agenda.
But we can bring that back during the presentation to look at, look at what other counties are doing, just to share that with you.
I think it's very important.
Yeah.
Thank you, Joe Paul.
Okay.
Thank you a lot, Joe Paul, appreciate it.
Of course.
So, one last question, Joe Paul, you're gonna do it according to, so when would this meeting happen? It'll, the, 'cause you wanna do it according to the June valuation, you said, right?
You know, I, I'm just gonna have to separate that as a different, you know, a different endeavor. And then, so, the, the valuation, I'll come back probably in August to talk about where we're at, sort of like this. And then, but for, maybe, maybe next month, we can come back for the, to make a decision for the, for the beginning of the next fiscal year of different options.
For the second, the second meeting in June?
We can do that.
Right after the budget?
Yes, thank you.
Twenty, twenty-second.
Ray, when would we, Joe Paul brings up, you know, do we change the, the cap, when would we have that kind of discussion?
Well, that's, that is a discussion that we would have to probably have for negotiations, labor negotiations, and that is in October, I think, is when we actually have that, so. Probably August timeframe, we'll start, we'll meet, we'll start meeting to discuss that, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Doesn't that usually take place, uh, August, September?
Yeah. July, August timeframe, we start, we start the process.
Well, just, just for the record, I, earlier the better. I, I like to start these negotiations, you know, really in July, in theory, I'm looking at Edgar right now, and he's giving me a dirty look, but, but, you know, once again, throughout the years, Ray, it seems like we put ourselves in a bad spot, because we start negotiating two days before. And, you know, I just wanna make sure that everybody understands that there are give and take, there is give and take in these negotiations, so the earlier we start the, I think the more advantageous it is for both parties.
And that's, that's fine, we'll, we'll make, we'll take that in consideration and do that. And I think, just an FYI on that, we will have numbers in June, so it's perfect, from CalPERS, and, and we can meet.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll call you later, Joe Paul, 'cause you never answered my question.
Open for question for the public?
Yes, uh, we'll bring it to the public, any public comment out there?
I'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please press raise your hand icon or star nine on your phone. No comments?
Bring it back to the chambers, any questions? No one there, so we'll go to number three. We'll let Mr. Espinosa take over.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, board members. I wanna go ahead and invite up Gabriel Llosco. He is gonna be presenting to you the budget update, fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. And I wanna thank RMA as well, Benny Young, for creating CIP agenda for you, following Gabriel. So Gabriel, go ahead and start off.
So, good morning, board, welcome, and thank you for taking the time, Chairman. Thank you to CEO Espinosa, and thank you to the members of the community and county staff that have helped kind of continue this process and keep it going. This is, like Ray mentioned, the second meeting that we have. The next meeting that we're gonna have in June is gonna be the public hearing for the, for the budget. So, a little bit, just to cover a little bit about what we're gonna discuss here, we're gonna look at some items that were left pending from the last meeting, that we wanted to bring back to give a little bit more information, give some updates on some of the schedules and positions and how we're looking like. We're also gonna have, like CEO Espinosa mentioned, we're gonna have Benny here to go over a couple of slides related to roads and CIP projects, things that we're looking to address in this coming year, and even a tentative five-year plan going forward. So, getting started here, one of the items that we wanted to look, to look at is looking at budget policies and what they cover. There are four main areas, one is operating policies, personnel policies, capital improvement policies, and reserving contingency policies. The first one that we're gonna be discussing here is operating policies, like you see, is very extensive, it covers a lot of different areas. Key takeaways from operating policies, we wanna make sure and be very diligent and make sure that we have all the appropriate information to make the best decisions that we can, to use all the information that's out there and that's available, to make use of all the funding that we do have. Making sure that we analyze any ongoing contributions, as you heard previously with Joe Paul's presentation, looking at our OPEB contribution, how is that looking like? Looking at, if we're thinking of moving from one insurance provider to another, how is that gonna affect the budget, and how is that gonna affect the bottom line, both for the employees and for the county? We're also looking to utilize and maximize the use of any other sources of funding, whether that be teeter funding coming in, whether that be special revenue from a special revenue department, or any one-time funding that we're getting, either from the state or the federal government in the form of grants, or any funding available to do projects, whether that be going to roads or infrastructure. One item that we wanted to make sure that we touch on, it's part of the operating policies, is looking at requests for proposals, so. And this is, information is pulled right off of the purchasing policy that we have right now. So, a request for proposal is a solicitation and a purchasing process designed to seek and obtain goods and services, used when there's a variety of ways to meet a need, county requirements are not precisely defined or quantified, specifications are not available or yet to be fully determined, and are when professional services or certain personnel services are required. So I believe that there were some questions in the last meeting last week about some of the contracts that were brought up to the board for them to decide, there were some questions about the need for these to go off to, for an RFP proposal. And like this kind of definition exposed, some of the reasons that they don't particularly need to go out for that is the service being provided is very specialized. In the case of those couple of contracts, the fiscal consultant and the other consultant, those are very specialized services. There are very, very complicated reports that are put together, both for the state and federal government from the funding that we receive. There's a mixture of different funding sources and streams, and it's very important to make sure that all of this is put together correctly. And that's one of the main reasons why some of these contracts don't end up going through an RFP process. They're more just set up to go on one-on-one. The next piece, the next policy that we wanna touch on is our personnel policies. Here, the biggest kind of areas that we wanna touch on is make sure that we're planning. The departments are planning with the administration office to make sure that we have plans set up in place, whether it be for personnel that are gonna be retiring, if there's any costs associated with paying out any vacation payouts, or any, any, any other funding that needs to be paid out to some of these staff. Or looking at positions, if, if there's positions that are gonna be, being requested by the different departments, making sure that we're covering and we're looking and planning ahead, so we're as not just caught in, caught, caught in a dilemma where we're looking and needing to make adjustments throughout the year, making sure that we capture and we make adjustments at the beginning of the year and plan ahead. A big piece, big component that we definitely look at is capital improvement and policies. For here, one of the biggest areas of concern and make, and one of the areas that we definitely look at with a lot of detail is looking at different projects and different infrastructure and items that we want to do in this upcoming year, making sure that we're covering all our bases. We're looking at important projects either for the community, as in looking at roads, or county, if we needing to upgrade a building. We definitely wanna make sure that we optimize funding and use all of the resources available to provide the best, the best projects that we can put out there. The next piece that we wanna look at here is our reserving contingency policy. So here, it's, it's a breakdown of a couple of policies, all related to different sets of funding. There is a general purpose reserve policy that, that we're, that is set up and we're looking to continue to implement. It's set up to be funded between twenty-five and fifty percent of general fund expected expenditures. There's actually a, a different side of looking at this, this is our internal policy. There is another policy set up by GF4A, so the General Financial Officers Association, and that one is set up as only needing to have two months of operating expenses. So, two months of operating expenses constitutes to, you know, two months out of twelve, which comes at about, you know, somewhere between fifteen, twenty percent. So, us wanting to have twenty-five to fifty percent, the need for that, and as we've kind of discussed, has been because we are particularly a one-source funded general fund, particularly through property taxes. And because we are kind of reliant on one source of funding, we don't wanna make sure, you know, you don't wanna have all your, all your eggs in one basket, you wanna make sure that it's diversified. And one of these reasons that we have a very kind of aggressive reserve policy is because we don't wanna make sure that we end up in a situation, like we had discussed previously, the housing market may correct itself, and all of a sudden, we have a drop in property taxes, and we're not receiving any. So, these are all kind of policies that we have in place. Moving on here, the next piece that I wanna touch on, and kind of the meat and potatoes of this presentation, I'm gonna be covering the gang limit resolution, that hopefully the board will approve and the chairman will sign. I'm gonna be giving out some recommendations from the CEO office related to some positions that we're looking at adding. We're gonna cover, one of the items actually I wanted to talk about right now is actually the American Recovery Plan Act, and making sure that this is gonna be a piece that is gonna be added to the budget. We're definitely gonna be addressing critical infrastructure, whether that be looking at broadband, sewer power plant, and a sewer cleaning facility, and then anything that is an allowed expenditure within the scope of the plan. Two key items that I definitely wanted to touch on, the recommended budget will be published on June first, and that's via the county budget guide, code two oh nine oh six five. So it requires the county to publish a recommended budget and make sure that it's available for the community and everyone to look at. The date that we're looking to publish it is June first. The next date that we wanna look at is public hearings, so the CEO recommended budget will be brought forth for public hearings on June twenty-first. This, public hearings need to take place, and you need to have a budget set up before June thirtieth, because we wanna make sure that we start out the new fiscal year on July first up and running, and if there are departments out there that are waiting on purchasing specific items or hiring for specific positions, that everything is moving smoothly. So the first one, like I mentioned, that I wanted to cover is the gang limit. So, the gang limit, as it was established back in the seventies, is a limit on the appropriations that state and local governments can bring in from allowed either taxes, fines, different revenue streams that are set up for general government purpose. This is set up as a limit, it's, the limit is a constitution of the previous year. The previous year's limit times a multiplication that is composed of looking at consumer price index, which is inflation, a basket of goods, on the cost of everything going up, and also on population. As a population of a, of a jurisdiction, state or local government area increases, there's also a proportion of that which is accounted for that. Now, a very interesting item to, you know, mention about the gang limit is, in the whole course of California's history, we've only exceeded it one time, and during that time, the way that the gang limit is set up, the way that it mentions and the way it's written out, if the government jurisdiction exceeds the gang limit, then there is essentially what, what is, amounts to a reimbursement to taxpayers. So what that means is taxpayers will end up getting some of the money that they've already paid in the form of taxes to the, to the state and local governments. So, currently, this, this year, actually, we're gonna be exceeding it, the governor actually last The governor actually last week said that they had over $70 billion in surpluses on the state budget side. What that meant is that the state collected a lot of revenue that they didn't think they were gonna collect because of COVID, and what that did is it actually exceeded their gang limit, putting them actually $16 billion over their limit. And it looks like from what the government said, they're gonna be proposing payments back to the taxpayers. They're gonna put limits and on who can be receiving. I think from some of the early projections, they said that taxpayers making up to $75,000, which is about two-thirds of Californians, were expected to receive a little bit over $1,000, which is essentially gonna work as a, you know, form of stimulus payment, the form of money that the state collected that is gonna be returning in excess to the, to the, to the residents of the California. So, part of, like I mentioned, the gang limit is, there's a resolution that is here for you to look at and sign. Our gang limit for fiscal year 21, 22 is $43 million. Right here, I have all the different revenue streams that go towards the gang limit taxes, whether that be sales or property taxes, license permits, and state and federal aid. We received any that go towards the limit. And our total amount of revenues that go towards the limit is $24 million, which leaves us well under the limitation by $18 million. Essentially, if you look at a comparison from this number to the state's number, the state is exceeding the limit. So that means the state is actually bringing in revenues to exceed it, to continue to fund operations. And that's actually one of our main areas of concern, is that, as you see kinda from the slide, the state says our limit on collecting revenue at $43 million, but we're only at a little bit over half. So, there's definitely, you know, you start to see it when you look at the budget and the form that revenues are coming in, and it's something that we definitely wanna look at to addressing. And it, it's something that the board has taken initiative by looking at generating revenue through other areas and different streams. And, and like I mentioned, it's one of our biggest budget concerns, making sure that we're looking at areas to address and grow our revenues, because our expenses are growing, and they are growing faster than our revenues. And we wanna make sure that we're, we're taking care of that. We've already been in discussions about bringing in new revenues through cannabis, and we're also looking at other, other areas to bring in revenues through the economic development projects. Other areas of concern in the budget that we're gonna be looking at is high vacancies and employee turnover, making sure that we're addressing those and looking at those, and definitely beginning to move towards the process of removing the vacancy budgeting side of it, to make sure that our budget is a little bit more straightforward and put together. The last area of concern is definitely still tied to COVID-19. Everything is still changing. It looks like we're moving a little bit closer back to normal, but still, there's still that little bit of concern still related to it. We don't know how it's gonna turn out moving forward, so there's still that little bit of concern. So one of the items that I wanted to touch on, this is not the complete list. As I mentioned here, I've attached the complete list on the, on the item, on the agenda item online. And here I cover some of the main areas, and it, and it touches upon some of the policies that we have. We're trying to leverage any other, we're trying to leverage both the general fund and any funding that we're getting either through state, through grants, or through the federal government, and using other areas. So for example, we're gonna be recommending to add a couple of positions related with AB 109 money, and then some other positions through special revenue departments. Like I mentioned, this isn't an extended list. There's other positions that we're still in the process of venting out and looking. And hopefully, by the time the budget is made published on June 1st, we can have a more defined, complete list of positions that we're looking at adding. One of the main areas that we are gonna be looking at addressing is definitely our, our, staff that work at RMA and making sure that we're taking care of roads crew and everything that they're working out there. So we have a couple of positions in direct relation to that. Another area that I wanted to look at and touch on is fixed assets. Any kinda key items that we're looking at adding, sheriff's office is gonna be wanting to add a couple patrol vehicles, some training equipment, probation on the same kinda level of transportation and equipment. One area which I thought was really cool, HSA and public health are wanting to add, and also continue the, the talk of making sure that we're taking care of, you know, the COVID emergency crisis. They're looking at purchasing an RV van and making this like a mobile vaccination clinic to go out and reach out to our, our residents that are maybe really far out there, or that can't have transportation to a clinic. This could be a way for them to, if, if they're wanting to get a vaccine, to be able to go out and get it. Like I mentioned, the other one, there's a very extended list and can't really fit all the items on here. So there's an attached item which has all of these on there. We're still venting out a lot of these items, and some may get added or removed as we kinda move along with discussions with the departments. And those are kinda the primary areas that I wanted to cover.
Let me, if I may, just real quick, Mr. Chair, just wanna kind of highlight a couple things on the fixed assets. With regards to that, from a general fund perspective, it's about a $500,000 item. Not a whole lot, it's about there. The scheduled positions, I'm not sure if that was mentioned, but it's about $150,000 general fund hit. The other ones are all more or less covered through subvention of some sort, through AB 109 or other things. And then I think I just wanted to just highlight as well from, with regards to the gang limit, how important the, the ad hoc is for addressing revenue. I think that really kinda paints a real good picture of the need to address revenue, along with all the other things we've been discussing, but this is, they're all just tied together, and, and the value of that. And ultimately, I think those are the kinda the key points, the regards to some of the funding. I'm not sure if it was highlighted, but there's, you know, definitely an importance of having these policies in place, the reserve and contingency policy, and continuing to invest in those disaster recovery reserve, the rainy day reserve, as well as the contingency plan. I think those are important. I think we need to continue with that. We can discuss that further, but I think, I think those policies are sound. They've been proved really beneficial, especially during COVID, during the slides that we've had, the flood, flooding that we've had. It's been just, I think, very smart with regards to the board to establish those policies and having those funds available when we need it. We had the rains recently that we used, the disaster recovery funding there for hiring Granite Rock and Chapin to come out there and fill potholes. So just, I just wanted to share those, those points with the board and highlight that, just kind of a review with the board. So with that, I do know that this part of the presentation is, is done. We can invite Benny Young and his team up, and then we can open it up for discussion, or if your board has any questions.
Mr. Chair, a quick question. I don't, I don't know if this is the appropriate time. In regards to, you know, new hires, I'm just curious with, and I know to a certain extent this is addressed through the, through the lobbyists, but do we feel confident as, as a county that we have people within each department that are capable and have the time to apply for grants? The reason I ask that particularly now is that, you know, there's a lot of opportunities, and I certainly don't wanna leave money on the table. I think it's come up before, whether we should have a county grant writer, might be cost-effective. It's maybe not necessary if you feel confident that each department, you know, does that actively and consistently on their own. But if we're undermanned, my concern is, is, you know, it's just not something that everyone has time to get to, and we may be, you know, leaving money on the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, it's a very good point, and if the will of the board is there, we could allocate funding for a grant writer or contract with somebody. We do have grant writers in Health and Human Services that we have contracts with, and other offices as well that we contract out with, especially on the subvention side of things. However, on the general fund side and with regards to administration, we've been tackling that. I do know that we have, you know, the park, for instance, grant, and there's, we've moved forward with processing that and hiring somebody to assist with that.
I know within RMA, we have someone that is, you know, writing grants for federal funds, for example.
That's correct. That's right. So we have that, but I think, I think you bring up a very good point, that there's so much money right now, and there's so many programs right now, that we need to be a little bit more focused in trying to actively pursuing those funding. I have a meeting tomorrow with the lobbyist to discuss just that, and to, to address what are, what potential is out there, and what we can do, and what they can do for us, if they can actually move forward with getting funding for us, which they are actively pursuing, but maybe applying for. But, you know, I think, I think you bring up a really good point that I think we need to address and add maybe some funding for that in the budget, so we can, you know, if we have to go out and hire somebody, we can.
Right, 'cause not only is all their, all that state surplus money where there's opportunities, but if you read through the, the federal, you know, CARES Act or relief fund, whatever it's called now, this, in addition to the $12 million, there's quite a bit of money that is, you know, allocated for potential grants for counties that obviously you have to apply for. So there's opportunities there as well.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yes. I echo Supervisor Tiffany. I've been talking about grant writer for I guess a year and a half or two years now, and, but now really, I think we're seeing now is really the time. For me, I would prefer more of a consultant, as opposed to bringing somebody on, so that if it doesn't work out, we can bail. But I, I tend to believe it will work out because of all the money. It's not just the work of writing the grants, which takes a lot of time. It's a specialized area, and so I think we'd get a benefit just from that, but also keeping tabs on the laundry list of available opportunities is another area where, you know, we can make sure that we're not letting those opportunities fall through the cracks. And then on further questions, are we, is it better to wait till the end if they're relevant to?
It's up to your board. I mean, I think if it's, yeah, if it's relevant to this.
Get it in your mind, in your mind right now.
Great. Just generally, I'm wondering with the $12 million in COVID funds, if there's a way we can get creative, you know, you can use that on staffing. Is there a way we can shift some of that money into losses that we've had from an operational perspective, and then perhaps take more of our general fund money and put that toward roads as a, just creative accounting that we could potentially do, because roads are not currently, and I know different board members have different perspectives on where to spend the money. I'm not talking about all the $12 million, but if there's a way to potentially, you know, use COVID dollars on some of our losses operationally, and then maybe use more of our general fund dollars on infrastructure, that might be something to consider. You had something on there on the specialized services, RFPs, and I get that, and it came up in the, I think the prior meeting with behavioral health. My perspective on that is to at least, and again, I'm new to this, and I understand specialized services, especially in behavioral health, but my concern is that if we're not at least shopping around, or at least giving the perception that we're willing to, you know, go in other, other directions, because there have to be other competitors in some of these industries, I assume. My concern is if we just go year to year and we keep that turnstile going, that those contractors know that, and they're, you know, gonna be charging us a premium. I understand these are subvention dollars, but still, we have to be careful with all tax dollars. And so, that's just a general comment on, you know, maybe we don't go out for bid on everything, but, you know, on some things, I just feel like if there are multiple contractors in the region or that are potentially we could use, that we should at least be exploring options as we go, just as a general thought. The general fund reserve policy of 25 to 50%, I think that's definitely worth looking at, because we're, we're extremely prudent, almost to the point where we're overly prudent, and maybe it's not even, you know, healthy to have 50% reserve. And I've talked in the past about looking at potentially drawing down some of those funds for roads. I would still support that if fellow board members were on board with that, and maybe looking at just a flat, rather than having 25 to 50%, maybe we pick a number. Because the road issue's never gonna go away. We're always gonna have tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions of dollars of road liabilities. So if we picked a flat general fund reserve percentage, like say 25%, then we would know year to year how much we would have in excess to potentially spend on infrastructure. And then as far as my, you know, as far as adding new positions, just generally, 100% RMA, we gotta get that done, gotta have that roads crew filled out. And then I also would, wondering if, you know, if our incoming sheriff at some point might, you know, get involved. I know they're making some requests, but I just wanna make sure that we're providing our sheriff's office with, you know, the resources that they need to get toward that potentially three deputies, you know, every shift. I know they have three some shifts, but I really would like to see us have that as a goal, to get to the three deputies per shift and provide our sheriff's office with the needs that they have. And, you know, and I'm, I'm really glad that our incoming sheriff is a supporter of traffic patrol in particular. I just wanna make sure that we're equipping our sheriff's office with the needed resources to, to implement that. And then just a quick question, I guess this is for Benny, when, when you're up there, just wondering the status of the, and I can save that for later, the potential to get those disaster funds from the feds that we've been spending on the roads. That's all, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Chair, just a quick follow-up. Supervisor Cosmic, he raised the, the road crew, that staffing. I was speaking to Ray yesterday about that, and I totally agree that, you know, that is a key area. And I think it's probably true for all of us up here, certainly for me, that by far and away, that's the number one issue that comes up, is dealing with the roads. And even, we're, I, I don't know, probably not in my lifetime where we have the money to fully deal with the roads, but at least we need the road crews to be able to keep up with them, with the potholes. What Ray and I discussed, and I don't know if we're, there's gonna be opportunity to discuss this later, it, it may not just be the need for more openings that we budget for, but we also may need to look at what we're paying these people. Because, you know, the reason why, you know, people are leaving, some cases are retiring, but they're leaving, or we can't attract and fill these positions, even when we do have openings, is because we're not paying enough. We may be, we may be okay relative to what other counties are paying, but in this day and age with construction the way it is, what, you know, people like Chapin and Grant Rock and others are paying, we're just not competitive, and that's why it's so tough to find people. So anyway, that, that is an area that I think, I know the county's looking at that already, but an area that we, we may need to look at further. Thank you.
Thank you. If I may, I have been working with HR as well as RMA. I know I've discussed this with Benny on more than one occasion. We really need to address the vacancies, especially in the road crew. I mean, it's just, it's been like that since I've been here, and there's been a ton of turnover. And we have, just, just so the board is, knows that we have looked at other offices over the years to address those issues, where we just can't recruit for whatever reason, and we raise the salary up, and, and we have noticed some, you know, we have noticed of being able to fill those positions in some cases, probably majority of the time. So I think at this point, you know, we definitely need to do that. I know they have vacancies now, that's why we're looking at providing some FTEs for them, but maybe not quite as much. If we need, if they're still full, if they fill all the positions, they fill these positions, and there's still a need, we'll come back to your board and we'll do an amendment if there's definitely a need. We'll make sure that happens. I, I just feel like we've, we're running a vacancy, and they, they have vacancies now, but we're tying up that money in the budget. And that's kinda the, the other issue, on the other side of the coin, so to speak, that we have to look at actually doing certain things with the, with that. So I just wanted to share that point. So I know HR is working on it, and I know Benny is working on it. So we'll, more to come with that. With regards to a few of the questions that were raised, I wanted to share that the Budget Office and Administration, we have been looking at the American Rescue Act and backfilling some of the safety money, fire. Fire, safety, to put in any front-facing safety offices. And, and backfilling that as well as looking at the teeter fund and our losses with that and scrutinizing that. That's the other thing that. Gabriel is looking at as well. I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that. We could use some of those funds. Backfill that and then free up some of the general fund, which we could redirect general fund to whatever we want, roads. I think has been very, you know, it's been important to the board and, and we, and we're hearing that. With regards to the RFP, we, you know, administration can go ahead and, and request in the new year to go out to RFP. Unless there's a good reason why we don't, to reevaluate all the contracts with everyone. It's a, it's a tall order. It's a lot of. So we have to be cognizant of how many people they have employed and, go ahead.
Well, there, to me, it's a. You know, I agree that we need to go to different contracts, but then again, there's a part of me that understands that when we award a new contract to someone, let's just say I'm making this up. It's a thousand dollars or less. What happens a lot of time is it takes time for them to learn the new process. So in theory, we've lost. And, and that's what we need to be careful of. We can't just say, well, I want to change everything because that's not, that's not the right way sometimes. So we have to be really strategic about this and don't just run with it, but we need to really maybe take a couple contracts a year, a year. You know, that, that's the, that's the way that I'd like to see it done, but that's just my opinion. I just want to warn everybody once again, it's, there's a, there's a learning point. And that's, that's the hard part about these contracts.
That was kind of my latter part of my comment, that there's, you know, staffing that is required to do that. It takes months to go through the process. And, and it's just a tremendous amount of work. So we have to be cognizant. There are so many contracts that we have. That we have, you know, we probably won't be able to do them all. It's just impossible. But we can start looking at that and, and be a little bit more serious about. Some of the contracts that there's been concerned by the board historically that we'll, we'll address. I think that's fair to say. With regards to policy, the twenty-five percent on the, on the reserve policy that was also brought up. I just wanted to share with you, twenty-five percent equates to approximately fifteen million dollars. Versus the two months that's in the GFA, the GFA recommends a, at a minimum of a, a general purpose governments. Regardless of size, maintaining unrestricted budgetary fund balance in their general fund of no less than two months of regular general fund operating revenues. So it's approximately five, six mil, six million dollars. But there's also, I think it's really important to keep in mind that in part of those recommendations from the GFA. That, and I have the auditor here, he can elaborate further, there has to be. There really has to be. Looking at it from an appropriate level based on the county in itself. So. Really, you know, if there's going to be disasters, which we've been incurring every year, there's been something coming up. And we've been putting a lot of money out based on that. I think what was brought up from our budget officer. That we have one source of revenue, so we have to be mindful of that too, really. I mean, really, we have one source that's, that covers majority of our obligations. Sales tax, it's a very, very minor piece. So, so we have to be very careful with that and I think, but I think, you know. Twenty-five percent I think is somewhat reasonable or maybe even a little less, maybe twenty percent. But we just, you know, obviously we've been very conservative, but, and maybe we could talk a little bit more about this later, but I just wanted to share with you to put in perspective what those numbers are. And kind of help you, your board, kind of give us some direction with regards to that. What else? There was one more, I think. And the sheriff's deputies, I think what we can do is. Historically, we've worked on bringing in more staff for safety. This last year or two, year and a half, we've been trying to put more staff. To RMA for road, for roads. That's been really the voice of the board as of late and in getting that office shored up, addressing some funding. But we can, and I would recommend if it's all right with the board, to work with the incoming sheriff to work on a plan for next year on what we can do.
Just to be clear on that, when we're saying we're concentrating on RMA, the actual funding and the. Available manning is there. We just need to find people, right? I mean, they're, they're, the.
Oh, yeah.
Are open, we just need to find people. Whereas in the sheriff's department, I want to say, I don't know off the top of my head, but we're probably. With Manning, I think we're close to a hundred percent over there. I mean, we might be at, I would say ninety at the most, ninety-five, if I recall, there's probably one or two. But, you know, so we're talking apples and oranges where the RMA, we just need to employ people. Those positions are already there. So.
Unfilled, yeah.
Yeah, that's, so.
In some cases, yeah.
Yeah, so I think we really need to focus on the sheriffs because we'd have to recreate the wheel to add more manning to that already, that department.
Again, this is, it, it's the will of your board.
Yeah.
And that's why we're, that's why I'm actually bringing this up. It's, it's what you guys want to do.
Well, that's what I'm trying to say. It's, it's not the will of the board. It's Mr. Young and his group. Recruiting people and bringing them in because the positions are not filled. The, the, our FTEs, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, we just spoke about this. Our FTEs are roughly three hundred and.
FTEs? FTEs?
FTEs, yeah.
Oh, I didn't get.
The three hundred and ninety, right? Is that what we said? And we have roughly four hundred and ninety on the books. So it's not the will of the board. The board has nothing to do with that. We need you and Mr. Young to fill those positions in the RMA department. And secondly is if we want to go with the sheriff, that's the will of the board is to add the, the manning.
That's what I was referring to.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
Yeah, if the board, if the board wants to, to add more positions to the sheriff's office, we can do that. It's, again, it's, it's, that's the will of, that's what I was referring to.
Well, because we're not adding anything to RMA. We're just trying to.
Well, no, that, if you go back to the FTE slide, there is, there isn't adding of two individuals plus a reclassification on one. So there's. There's in essence, three positions that are being addressed.
But we're not, but we're not even manned over there.
That's correct. We're not fully manned.
Yeah, what are we, where are we at right now? That's, that's the problem I have is every year, and this is nothing against you Benny, every year we talk about this. We talk about the Army Department. Needs to be manned. Well. Why, why isn't it being manned?
But again, Mark, as, that's the reason why I brought up this, the, what we pay.
It has nothing to do with the pay. I mean, we're talking about the entire RMA department.
Yeah, no, but I'm, I'm talking about the road crew.
Well, yeah, we, we've talked about pay every year too. This isn't anything new, Bob. This has been going on for at least three years since I've been here.
Right.
And every year we talk about, we need to work on the RMA department. We need to increase their pay, but nothing ever gets done. So, you know, now, now it's, we have a bigger board that understands what's going on and we need to hold them accountable. That's.
I, I totally agree with you, but, and I can't speak to prior years. All I can say is in talking to, and Benny can touch on this, but. In talking to, to Jason about this with, as far as the road crew, it is a challenge right now to.
Yeah, no, that's, that's no argument on that at all. Yeah, it's hard.
And if I may, I was with the county for six months, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, and I was a staff analyst out there at Public Works. And it's just the nature of the job. It is the, the pay compensation that we as a county offer and it's just not competitive enough. So we train employees to do the job and then they're offered a whole lot more elsewhere. And so it deals with. Recruiting and not only recruiting, but recruiting with a package that is enticing enough for them to want to stay here. And it's got to be a better evaluation process when we recruit, that we get someone who's going to commit to the job. And not just say lip service, but really commit and deal. And so I wouldn't blame it on the, on the director per se, but that's going on eleven years that I'm aware of. So.
Well, then there's an issue.
We got marching orders. We understand. We'll, we'll address that. I know that right now it is in, in HR and RMA's office. And they are aware that we need to address the pay, so.
And I'm sorry, one last, just circling back to the reserve real quickly. So just for clarification, we currently have roughly twenty-five percent. In reserves, give or take.
So, if I can address that?
Maybe not that much.
Unrestricted and you're gonna, yeah.
So, yeah, within restricted, unassigned funds and assigned funds, we, we are somewhere between twenty-five and fifty percent. The current unassigned balance at the end of this last year was close to around eight million. So that's money that we can put towards any shortfalls in any general fund department or if we want to put towards. The roads or any of these other areas where we don't expect the funding to come right back. For instance, some of the money that we've been putting towards the. That, because of the natural disaster, the, the weather phenomena, we put money towards that in the hopes that FEMA would then later. Come back and refund it. So we're using those unassigned, the unassigned funding as kind of strategically as we can be. Going towards that, going towards the great place program where that's money kind of coming out of unassigned and then in the hopes of later. Getting recouped in one area or another.
And that, and that's that you mentioned fifteen million. The difference between the eight and the fifteen has to do with.
Oh, so.
With, go ahead.
So if I can address that. So the fifteen million is what, what we would want to have. As unassigned balance. That's the, that's the, that's the, that would be our key goal on what we want to have going forward. In prior years before these last kind of years with uncertainty because of COVID, we were floating around that number closer to fourteen, sixteen, twelve million dollars. It's just now in these more current years where we've been needing to use some of that unassigned balance towards these other areas. Hopefully getting refunded and making sure that we can stock up a little bit of more funding.
But if we, if we do get refunded, then we'll be back up to around that fifteen million range.
If we continue to get refunded and we can surplus it. And, you know, that's also taking into consideration that we're going to be receiving our revenues as we project them because there's. There's still that level of uncertainty with revenues as they come in. If they don't come in as expected, then we're going to be eating some more of that.
So the, and, and there's no guarantees, of course, but.
Right.
So then, then again, Ray, you said that, you know, the recommendation generally is around two months in a reserve.
That's the GFA.
Which would be for us about?
Five, six million.
Okay, so even at the eight million, we're still, we're.
Yeah, we're still a word.
Okay.
I'd like to keep in mind, I wanted to add, just to add to your comments, we also have other funding that when you look at it, it's, it's not, I was referring to more than just. It's restricted, yeah, it's restricted reserves, other reserves. So we have a. Award home funding. There's some other funding that we have as well, but once we get the green light, that can be dropped in the unassigned fund balance. I just wanted to be clear with that. And we have, I think, tobacco securitization funding as well. So there's, there's a decent amount of other funding that's kind of. It's, it's in reserves, but it's in a restricted reserve. Just want to be clear with that.
Yeah, once, you know, things settle down or things get covered, then the funding drops out of the reserve or assigned into unassigned. And then that becomes part of the balance that we could use to backfill.
And we always seem to compare each other with different counties and stuff like that, you know, just for the record, the other counties, Ray. Are their reserves even close to what we have as a percentage?
Percentage wise? Thanks.
Yeah, they're, they're not even close. They're, they're, you know, our percentages are, that's something, you know, we can thank the people before us. The majority of these people that stood up here or were sitting up here were farmers and their mentality was save, save, save. And that's what we continue to follow. And, you know, we thank God for them too, because if we didn't have that, we would be like some of these other counties that have. You know, like a single digit. I mean, we're talking about less than four percent reserves. So that's a big win for us. I, I'd like to.
And other counties have gone, especially with the pandemic, you know, they, they're on furloughs and they're still on furloughs, some of these counties, so.
On that note, Mr. Chair, so when we're talking about a twenty-five percent general purpose reserve fund, that's just like using some of the reserve, some of the general fund. For flexibility sake, like to give us more ability to use those funds for, you know, things that come up or what, what are we talking about as far as that general reserve fund?
So the general reserve fund, the way that it'll work is it'll serve as a stopgap in case you have. A deep, like a drop in revenue. Let's say our property taxes for, like we had discussed before. Somehow the housing market drops down again and we don't see property taxes come in as they did before. Well, what we can then do is take some of this unassigned revenue that we've collected in the general fund and then backfill. Use it as kind of a little, a piggy bank where we can take from that, continue our normal operations, not have to furlough staff or cut programming or anything. And then in, in hopes that either the funding returns or we put together a plan going forward to address that decrease in revenue. Either looking at other revenue streams or revenue sources or needing to make some programming changes if that does occur later on.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Add, just, and for clarity purposes, this is one-time money. We, staff and administration and audit, we're very cautious of. Adding personnel to the, from the reserve side of things, just because of, you know, we will run out of funds after so long. If we, you know, so we got to be very cognizant of that and that's what we've been doing. The last five, four or five years, we've been putting it into one-time type money.
Well, and that, that makes sense because we don't have much depth, right, with our staffing. So I understand that you. You always have to protect at least the, the level of staffing that we, you know, to a certain extent, I just, which I agree with Supervisor Medina was mentioning. You know, just our, our, our sustainability financially is because we've been so protective. And I think that's helped us with not only our cash flow, but ultimately our credit rating, all that things opens up doors, right? So we can't, you know. And with all due respect, Supervisor Cosmic, I mean, I, it's good to have that money, but it's also good to not think about it. As a, as, you know, basically something that you're using to cover ongoing costs, right? You. If you have an emergency, there's, there's obvious reasons for that, but outside of emergencies, because in reality, it's like it should be more about, which I think. To a certain extent, it's pushed us in that direction where we're now, we're focusing on new revenue generation. That way, we still have that. That protective model over our staffing, so we don't have to furlough and, and all the consequences that come with it. So, and I had just one question, Gabriel, with. So you mentioned removing the vacancy budgeting. So what is that? That's kind of changing the budgeting formula and what is kind of the context of that you're?
Yeah, so I talked about it briefly on last meeting. So historically, what we've done as a county is we budgeted all positions. Fill their unfilled, but budgeted so as departments are able to go out there and recruit for some of these vacant positions. What that does is it really inflates the budget, so it makes it look, and it makes it so departments and the county has to, in a way. Hold the, the money for the positions and not put it towards, you know, if you want to go towards CIP projects or. Hiring, doing, hiring a consultant or moving and doing some, something with that money. It kind of ties us in. We leave it funded for the positions. If we begin to move away out of vacancy budgeting, we no longer are tied down to that, to that funding for the positions. If, let's say, a department feels the need, they can, we can make a change, come to the board, fund those positions if the funding is there. And then go out and hire for those, for those positions. If not, then the funding is left there for the general fund to put toward. Infrastructure or roads or any other, of these other areas. That does then may tie us in because if we want to hire staff, we can't. But that's something that we would like to address either by having more money in reserves, continue to grow that and nurture that to make sure that we have that available. Not use it as a, as a, as a, as another kind of source of funding that we can, you know, jump into if we need, but definitely. Keep it and make sure that we can nurture it going forward.
And so with, with that, the kind of the thought was, it sounds like, which I appreciate, I mean, I, I'm seeing kind of the logic in it that you're. You want those vacancies filled, but if there, if that money's just hanging out there and. There's almost has to be some kind of internal motivation to say, we want you to fill these positions, but if you're not going to fill them, we can't just keep hanging on to that money. And, and if anything, maybe that might encourage, which I agree, that's why I, when I was reading through this, kind of a succession planning. By increasing the availability of experienced employees through training and retention initiatives. So I know that. Succession planning is a big part of what, we have these huge gaps in services, right? Because all of a sudden you have people leave and then we're having to rehire, retrain. You know, there's all this, you know, basically delayed, right? Even with planning in RMA, I know that sometimes it's like, well, why don't we have consistency at times? Even with planning in RMA, I know that sometimes it's like, well, why don't we have consistency at times? I could see that being a logic. So I'm, you know, to a certain extent, I'm, I'm interested to learn what it means now. What does that mean at a department level?
So if I may.
Let me just, real quick, because this kind of goes into what you're, what you're thinking. Is I've been sitting through five of these budget hearings. Peter, you've been through three, and I know Ray's been through a lot more. But, but what I'm wondering is for the last five budget hearings, has Manning always been off by roughly, let's just call it fifteen to twenty percent? So, and, and that now, now that becomes the norm and not an anomaly. So that's what I think we're, what you're talking about is making it a more realistic budget, because that's what the actual is.
And what, and what we're doing is we're, we're using that anticipated percentage to offset the budget. That's basically what we're doing, and it's inflating the numbers. So we have been discussing internally for the last two, three years to get rid of that, to wean ourselves off. But there's been a lot of things that have occurred over the last two or three years.
Well, this year too is different because.
Right, we have a new person. COVID, it's just been one thing after another. But we eventually want to wean off of that and actually have whatever the F T E count is. But then it's very precise, we have to have a source of revenue in order to hire somebody. It's just that simple. We just cannot go around it any other way. Right now, we have flexibility, because it's just, you know, people leaving, coming in, and that, and that, we're basing it off of those percentages, which have been, actually, it's been increasing, to be honest with you. Started off about eight and nine when the first year, it went up to fifteen. And then it's been eighteen and twenty, twenty percent, twenty-one, twenty-two percent. Those incredible numbers. So anyway, so that just.
Yeah, and I think it assumes kind of that we're playing conservative by having that vacancy budget. But I think it actually is the opposite, because in reality, there needs to be a motivation to get folks to feel, to, to take those positions, right? Because really then, then, well, it, it doesn't justify the outcome, right? We, we, we have this vacancy budgeting, but we don't have the staff to do the job.
Well, what's happening is, i- is they are motivated, they are hiring, but then someone else leaves or, or retires or something else happens, as in they're filling that position. And so it's just a constant.
I could see all those variables. But my, I guess my biggest point is it pushes us to figure out the solution.
Well, I think, I think ultimately, we're just, we're, we're here. The solution is we need to have more revenue coming in down the road to add more personnel. That's basically what it boils down to.
Well, and I'm talking more along the lines of succession planning and, because that makes you more efficient, right? That makes you more productive.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
For clarification, back to the general fund reserve, when we're talking the two months or whether we're talking twenty-five to fifty percent, those percentages are, those relate to all of the reserves, right? Not just, and I think this is key here, not just the unassigned number. As far as when you're talking having two months, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that relates to all the reserves. So we're, so we're not just talking about twenty-five percent. You know, when we're talking that twenty-five percent number, it's, it's, it's not just relatable to the eight million, but it's relatable to the twenty plus. And I think it should be even higher when we get reimbursed from some of these federal programs, correct?
I think what we should do, we should be more concise in, in that part. I think we need to come back, maybe even before the next board, before the twenty-first, so in the next board meeting, actually share with you the reserves.
Yeah, I was going to say just a big pie graph. Showing the, you know, because that's a visual. I think it was on one of the budgets.
We have it in, I believe it's on this, but I think it's good for a talking point, because when we set policy at the next budget hearing, I think this is important, you hear it beforehand. And then we can actually allocate that into the budget. So that would be my recommendation to the board. We can come back on the, on the eighth, I think it is, the eighth of June, and just do a quick, you know, presentation to the board with the reserve balances. And we could work with auditing as well and, and discuss that.
And I completely agree with Supervisor Hernandez. We should have a healthy reserve, I think, and I commend the prior boards for getting us to this point. But, but as I said before, at some point, you know, to me, I would prefer to have an actual number, because at some point, leaving that flexibility, I just worry about, you know, to me, the roads are an emergency. The roads right now are, to me, an emergency. And, and I just don't, I don't want to leave any of that on the table. I'd, I'd like to get as much roadwork done now as we can and maintain a healthy reserve at the same time. That's really my preference. I just think our reserve might be a little bit much.
Yeah, okay, we, we got that.
I think Ray's answer to that is we need to go generate some revenue. Yeah, but I agree. I agree, yeah.
All right, if there's no other questions, Mr. Chair, we're going to go ahead and move on to the second portion of this presentation presented from our RMA office. Benny Young, the Director of RMA, he's going to go and get started.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Espinoza, thank you very much. I'm enjoying and appreciating the discussion today. I think it's very good. And I want to just preface what I'm about to show you on the capital improvement program with a couple notes of optimism with regard to the road program here. First of all, I think the C A O's approach to the vacancy issue is the correct one, and I fully support that. And I'm pleased to let you and him know, because I haven't had a chance to mention this to him yet, that within the road crews, we're down to three vacancies. We've been actively recruiting. I just wanted you to know we're making progress. What we asked for in the new budget was another crew. We only have the ability to fund two crews now, and I believe that we need three. And his recommendation gets us halfway there. And as he indicated, if we can fill out the vacancies and make sure we have the funding to support the additional three people that we would need to have a fully functional third crew, we'll be back for a budget adjustment at the appropriate point in time. In the meantime, I'll continue to focus on filling.
And, and Mr. Young, you know, just so we know, and I think a lot of people in our county and a lot of people in the dais who understand is you inherited a, an office that has been fixed, broken, broken fixed. I think we've had seven, is it seven in the last probably ten years? I think that's what someone had told me a couple nights ago.
I think it is seven.
So, so you know, what's happening here is we, you know, we're, I can speak for myself. I'm frustrated, and not at you, but at the way we handle things. And it's not a true representation of you, it's just, it's what you inherited. So I just want to make sure, you know, we understand that. It's a, it's a, it's a hard job, and just keep up the work. And, you know, I apologize if I'm too forward on certain things, but that's just my nature, so, sorry about that.
No worries, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for those comments, I really appreciate it. Let me move into the capital improvement program, and I'll try to summarize where we're at with that. And it's a little different than the draft that we showed you a little over a month ago. But first, I'd like to preface that with a couple notes of optimism. First of all, there are some things that aren't reflected in here that we're actively pursuing, such as grants. We have some grant applications that we're pursuing. One is a federal lands access program, and we're close to having that ready for submittal for some of our outlying county roads, and I can talk more about that if you wish. But I also believe that the impending passage by Congress of a jobs, federal jobs act that supplements the federal rescue act that passed earlier this session, there's going to be a major infrastructure bill this summer. And we will actively monitor that and pursue opportunities associated with that. And I think that, I am optimistic that that will lead to some opportunities for San Benito County. So I promise that I will keep track of that. And I also want to thank the C A O and Edgar in particular for working on the pay issue. I do believe that's a contributing factor to the, our ability to retain staff. And also your work, and Joe Paul, as he briefed you earlier today, on the benefit package and saving our employees a little of the cost associated with their benefit plan, health plan in particular, thank you for that. I think all of that works toward the end that we all hope to achieve. With regard to the C I P, what we have presented to you, and this morning I had placed at your workstation second draft of the recommended C I P. And when you have a chance, you might look through that capital improvement program. And I'm going to just kind of highlight some of the changes that we made between the last meeting and this meeting. And then it will be part of the publishing on June first. And then the public will be able to comment on it prior to the public hearing on June twenty-first, I think it is. So right now, the public doesn't have access to what I've given you in this book necessarily. But we will make sure they have it when the, the recommended budget is published. It's a major investment plan, and it takes place over five years. And the focus in the road bridges area, which I'm going to cover, and then Mike Shambless is going to cover facilities and parks, is on deferred maintenance. Clearly, there's not enough funds to carry the load that we need to, to address all the deferred maintenance. But I think we're going to put a serious dent in it. And to your point, Supervisor Cosmic, you're going to see some early action within the next few months on some key projects that I think will be of great benefit. Honestly, we need, as I indicated to you in February, about three hundred million dollars more if we want to improve the system to a good standard over ten years. And so that's in addition to what's reflected here. But this reflects the reality of the funding that we have available. And fortunately, we do have some funding available primarily through Measure G and S B one. It's kind of a complex funding mix. And when you look at the summary, and when you have a chance, if you, you don't need to do it right now, but when you get into your book and you look at a fold out that's just maybe two pages in, you'll see the five-year program at a glance by, as we're recommending it to you, by funding categories, starting with H B P, which is bridges, then going on through Measure B and S B one and so forth onto the second page. I'll summarize some of the highlights of that with the slideshow that we presented. This slideshow does not present every aspect of the program, just the areas that we made changes in between the draft C I P presentation on March, or April twentieth and today. Look at it as a one-year definite and a four-year tentative program. So every year, it rolls forward and you rework the program to make sure the first year of the program is what you have funds available for, to pursue right now. Some of the changes that have resulted from our April twentieth discussion with you had to do with updating our cost estimates. The board chair noted at that time that the cost of construction materials is going up, prices are going up. And so there's about a four and a half million dollar added cost to the program as a result of updated cost estimates. So I've had to move things back in the program in a couple places, instead of being in the second year. It might be in the third year. And on the flip side, though, we were able to find a one-point-three million dollar roughly carry forward in the S B one program that I was unaware of until our finance group in cooperation with Gabe did a more detailed accounting summary of what we've done in S B one, which is the gas tax increase here in California. In rough numbers, we get about two million a year from that fund and about three million a year, I'm averaging rounding from Measure G for our program. We've able to, been able to retain every project that we showed you last time, except one. And it was the fifth-year project that's just going to kind of go on hold and come back in next year as a fifth-year project, happens to be San Juan Road from, from San Juan Bautista to Highway one oh one. But it was already, I already had to show it in the fifth, fifth year. And so we're just, we've dropped that out for now. That's the only project that dropped out of the five-year plan, but it can come right back in next year. The first year is about twenty million dollars in investment. About half of that's bridges. So the bridge program tends to roll forward quite a lot. So I don't think we'll get ten million dollars worth of ridge, bridge work done in year one, but that's the way it lays out presently, because I want to push ourselves to get as much work done as possible. And then the roads in year one are a little over ten million as well. The five-year total for this program is a little over a hundred million. About sixty percent of that's bridges and forty percent of it is, is roads. And I'll, if time permits, the chair had asked some specific questions with regard to Fairview, Best and Siena Gah, that I will cover at the end of the presentation, if that's okay, Mr. Chair and members of the board.
Mr. Sir, thank you.
All right. And I wanted to thank Renee and Siera, who brought in a flash drive that I will use when we get to that part of the discussion. I won't spend a lot of time on the details, Mr. Chair, members of the board. But as Gabe has already noted, there will be a, we'll finalize this and it'll go in the recommended budget that'll be published on June first. And just, this morning, I would just like to highlight some of the major changes from your April twentieth presentation. And I've highlighted, we, I should say I, Karen Gummens was good enough to highlight this and read for me. Karen is the one that assembled those books for you. And as you recall, the county has about four hundred and fifty miles of roads, fifty-one bridges. Some of those are on the federal system, forty-eight R. Three aren't small bridges, but we're trying to find a way to address those small bridges as well. In this twenty-one, twenty-two capital program improvement list, you'll see nine funded bridge projects and no less than thirty-two projects from a variety of funding sources, including the federal funds, Measure G, S B one, enterprise, which is our landfill contribution to the ward's road system, and then some county and grant regional funded projects. Year one hasn't really changed in the bridge program, but I put, put it in in case you had a question about that at some point. That's the same program that we showed you last month. When we get to Measure G, we've made one key change in this program, and that, there was a board concern expressed with regard to the timing for San Benito Street from Nash to Union. So we managed to move that up in the program, so we would design in year one and build in year two, which is times perfectly, I believe, with the development of the regional park project. So that's the only change we've really made of any substance in the Measure G program. San Benito Street, Nash to Union, I think Supervisor Hernandez had asked a question about that last time. As I thought about it, I realized that that needed to be moved up in the program. So we've done that in, in what you're, you have in front of you now. The S B program, on the other hand, is a kind of a good news story. We had to drop some of the Measure G projects that we, the cost estimates didn't allow us to retain them in Measure G, moved them down to S B one and, and moved some of the early projects out in the program, which I could go over in detail if we need to. But what we were able to do as a result of finding one-point-three million dollars in carry forward for S B one, it's, carry forward's not really the right term, but it was, it was funds I didn't realize we had until we did a careful accounting of the funds expended to date in that program. Those five projects in red at the, on the lower part of this screen, two little pieces of Siena Gah Road, south of Union. We added two more segments of Fairview Road as a result of that. They're not all in year one, but they're now in the program, which allows us to challenge ourselves to get them designed and built when the year comes. And a little piece of Union Road, kind of a piece that got left out between Lad and the bridge. So we've added those to the program because Dean Scatata, who was here with me last week, worked with our Kevin Kamura, and they found that we had some money left on the table from previously committed S B one projects. So we added those to the program. We also added a new funding category for drainage work. And this, these are impact fees. There, we need a storm drain along Fairview Road north of Santana Ranch. And the sooner we get started on that, the better. So we've included some funds to get the, the design started in year one and hopefully start to build that in year two. I think it's, it's needed because there's some water that comes out of Santana Ranch that needs to be contained, confined, managed and taken down to the Santa Ana Wash.
Benny?
Yes, ma'am.
Benny, I know that you asked for questions later, but can you expand a little bit on what the plan is for that? Because I know that there's a few residents that have been complaining about the, the water flow and other issues. So what exactly is the project going to entail?
I thank you for the question. It would basically be a storm drain, so we would get that water underground, at least the routine flows, maybe not the, the larger, less frequent flows, but build a storm drain from Santana Ranch down to Santa Ana Creek. from Santana Ranch down to Santa Ana Creek. And that's not all we're doing on this. I'll just summarize it by saying that we're working with the developers of Santana Ranch and doing a peer review of the drainage system. There's something else going on there related to some discharges from detention basins that we think may not be correct, and so they're taking a look at that and with our help, and so that may lead to them having additional responsibilities as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Benny, other questions?
Yes, sir.
Just tell me to understand that.
Help me to understand that, the Measure G road allocation for San Benito Street, it says fiscal year 2023.
So, year one for this program is 21-22, so I put the design work in the first year, that's the first year, and then 22-23 is the second year, so two years from now, we should be able to start building it.
So, it is two years. I thought it was, yeah, I thought it was fall of '21.
I think we need time to design it.
The design, obviously, yeah.
So, we would design it this year and plan to build it next year.
Yeah.
And I think that'll time okay Supervisor with the development of the regional park.
Okay. Yeah, and I don't, you know, my ignorance, I don't know what the design phase looks like, what time, the timing is, but even just from my information, you know, what's typically a six-year to, or six-month, I'm sorry, like time, like how long does it take to design?
One reason I have asked, I have indicated the whole year for that, is we're going to probably have to get a little additional right-of-way for whatever we do at the intersection of River Parkway and San Benito Street.
Yeah.
So, I wanted to allow time for that as well.
Okay. Thank you, Ben.
You're welcome. Again, these are just excerpts from what you have in front of me, where, in front of you, excuse me, where we made some changes I thought the board would be interested in in particular. Under the category of RSTP, that's Regional Service Transportation Program funds that come to us through the COG. The county gets a defined share of that, and so I have recommended that we program a part of what we have available to designing a replacement for the new Idria Road crossing, which completely washed out in the winter storms. And if we are included in the state's declaration or we have eligibility for funding to cover this cost, we would ask for reimbursement. But I think it's important for us to go ahead and get this designed if we can, so I've recommended that we include that in the first year for design using our, part of our share of the Regional Service Transportation Funds that come through the COG. And back to the question you asked Supervisor with regard to the emergency declaration, we are still waiting to see. I think as time goes on, that's not in our favor, so I'm a little concerned about it. That's one reason I went ahead and said, let's go ahead and get the design started for this particular project that shows here the new Idria Road crossing, which washed out completely. If we get the funds through the declaration, then we can ask for reimbursement. And then there's a slide that continues to illustrate the fact that we have future projects that are unfunded, that we have to watch for opportunities for and chase the money, so to speak. Those three intersections, two on Fairview and one at Shore and Fraser Lake, those were applied for under a grant this year. We did not get selected, but I would like to resubmit them, and I think I know how to strengthen the grant application this time. Mr. Chair, one of those is one that you asked for, Fairview and Fallon, so we're going to resubmit that for a possible grant. But just in case we don't get it, I should have mentioned this back on the Measure G program, if you look at the last line on this page, Measure G, Fairview, Fallon, I put it in the fourth year of the program for construction with Measure G funds if we don't get the grant. And then if we don't get the grant, we can also, as you update the program next year, look at the possible advancement of that.
And that, just repeat that because there are a lot of residents, and I know Joe Paul's shaking his head because he sees the same thing I see about the Fallon and Fairview intersection.
I saw that, too.
You know, I don't have the answer, but you know, I certainly believe there needs to be some type of a stoplight there.
Correct.
Now, would this grant cover a complete overhaul of that area, or what are we looking at on a grant?
Yeah, it's a complete overhaul. It would be a major project, and alternatives would be considered, including a roundabout possibly. But in any event, it does need controlled intersection, and if we're not able to get the grant, then most likely it would be a conventional signal with approach work eventually.
Okay, so you will put this in to a grant and we'll see what transpires?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You bet.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Maybe I missed this. What do you see as the likelihood of getting this grant?
I think we can strengthen the grant and have a better chance, and I also am hoping that with the Federal Infrastructure Act, we might have some more flexibility for pursuing grants and/or allocations of funds that either come around or through Caltrans that we don't have available to us right now. So, there's, in that regard, there's a couple of projects that are like shelf-designed now, like Shore Road, we almost have it designed, and a piece of Wright Road just on the north end of Hollister, and we don't, they're funded in the program, but they're a few years out because of the issue that we dealt with on the cost estimation. If you look back at Measure G, you see Wright at the fourth line down at Shore. We're close to having those designed, so those are shelf-ready projects, and a lot of times, or shovel-ready, excuse me, when you have an infrastructure act at the federal level, there's a priority given to shovel-ready projects. So, we already submitted it through our lobbyist for consideration, and it didn't get funded or get included in the special appropriation, but at least we're going to watch for opportunities like that.
Yeah.
Does that help?
Yes, it does, and I just, for me, 24-25s, you know, in the event we don't get a grant, I, that's just too far out. We've got to find a way to fund that project. It's a, it's a big safety issue. I know that's Chair, I believe that's Chairman Medina's district.
Look for ways to accelerate it if we can.
I just want to make sure that remains a priority and that 24-25 is really not what we're looking at. I.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My hope would be that we will be able to get a grant and do it sooner. If we can't, we'll, you know, if not with this CIP iteration, with the next, we'll look at the possibility of just advancing it. If we try again and can't get a grant, we might as well look at ways to advance it if we can. It's just that there's a give and take, and there's only so much funds available.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Couple of quick questions. First of all, while we're talking about grants, Benny, what's the status on application? And then when we, when might we find out about the federal grants? Maybe you touched on that, I missed it, but.
It's okay.
For, you know, access to, you know, federal lands and stuff down in South County.
That grant is almost fully assembled. I'm expecting a briefing from the grant team. And to the Mr. Espinoza's point earlier, we have a contract grant writer for us, and he's very good, and so he's assembling the grant for what's called the Federal Lands Access Program, FLAP, and it's almost done, and it's a, it's a $2 million roughly, as I recall, grant that we may have a chance on. That comes through a different agency in the federal government other than the Federal Highway Administration. It comes through an office in Denver called the Federal Lands Group, and they're a little easier to work with than the Federal Highway Administration, so I, I'm cautiously optimistic about that one as well, but we're almost ready to submit to answer your question.
Okay. And how long does it take to usually find out? Do you have any idea?
Oh, I think we'll hear within a few months.
Okay. And then just a question, I know you and I spoke about this in the last several days. Sienega Road, I see that, I guess it's from different sources, it's in there both for dealing from Hidden Valley to Mudstone Ranch as well as from there to Bird Creek, and it looks like it's coming, it's drawing from different sources, although if I understand correctly, the first segment is going to be done, is that going to be started later this year?
Yes.
And then, and then the next section to Bird Creek is going to be the following year, is that correct?
He was going to put that in a flash drive and bring it up to us at the end of the presentation.
Okay.
You were out when he said that.
Okay.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Please proceed, and I just told Mr. Tiffany what you had stated at the beginning. So, we, just proceed, and we can do that at the very end if you don't mind.
Sorry, I missed that.
No worries. I'm sort of done with the road bridges program. I was going to ask Mr. Shambles to summarize facilities.
Okay.
But if you would like for me to, I can go ahead and answer the Fairview and Best and Sienega questions that were asked last meeting. Maybe I should just do that while we're on the road.
And I also see where South, it looks like that little piece of South Side Road, the 5,000 block, I think you call it, is going to get done right away, as you said.
Yeah, there are three projects, and I should have mentioned this during the course of the presentation, that we already have contracts for. They represent about $5.5 million worth of investment. One is, has Granite Rock doing Best Road, and that's going to commence within the next 60 days, I hope. They're dealing with a gas line that's in the way, and they're close to having that figured out, but that's already under contract. And to the chairman's question with regard to Fairview, it also includes a substantial piece of Fairview from Rosa Marada to McCloskey, so that's in that same contract, and between the two, that's over $5 million worth of work that should start within the next 45 to 60 days, perhaps sooner. Let me talk to you about Fairview, Sienega, since that was the question that just asked, and then I, can you help me figure out how to share this to the screen? Thank you. The green line, of course, is Sienega, and if you look at the C in Sienega, that's, just below that, there's a wash that's called Mudstone, it's the Mudstone area. So, the first piece of that, from where the blue line ends up to just north of that C on Sienega, is in the program for year one, and so we're completing the design for that, and it's, we're planning to construct that in the, within the fiscal year coming up. What we don't have fully funded is the section from Mudstone Ranch up and over the hill to the entrance to the Hollister Hill State Park, which is the wavy part of the green line going on down to what's called Bird Creek. There's a bridge there that we're replacing. We do have the bridge, a replacement funded in the five-year CIP. We have two slipouts up on top of the hill that are vulnerable places where the road could go down over the shoulder. We have those funded. So, in the next year, we're going to fix those slipouts, and we'll do the first section from Hidden Valley to Mudstone, and I think I put the continuing work on Sienega Road in. I put it in a funding category that you'll see called Transportation Impact Fees. I'm hoping we can get some Transportation Impact Fees to fill out the project budget and do that in a subsequent year. Let me go to Fairview for a minute. By the way, I'm sorry. I'm so needy. Thank you. Renee was good enough to give this to us, and the red is what you should look at on Fairview. Everything shown in red on Fairview is in the program, including a little piece that's needed just to connect from San Felipe to Lutis Lane on the north side. And part of that was because we were able to fill in what would otherwise be a couple of gaps with the additional funds that we found under SB1. So, Mr. Chair, I'm hoping that will be some promise for the citizens and all of us that depend on Fairview so much. There's still some gaps, and I've identified those as projects that we would pursue funding for in future years somehow to be determined.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. And I think that answers all the questions I had heard on the floor, and I'll turn the presentation over to Mr. Shambles to finish on facilities, if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I had one quick thing. You, I just had a thought, when you brought up the drainage basin earlier, and it just takes me back to the comment I made earlier about trying to be creative with our accounting. In my view, maybe this is out there, but if we have an accounting of every, any sort of water-related project, any sort of sewer, water, broadband, those areas that we know are eligible uses, if we use the COVID dollars on those capital or whatever it might be programs, then that would give us the ability to have more discretion with those dollars that, you know, let's say we put whatever dollar amount, $100,000, $1 million into drainage, if we use COVID dollars on that expenditure, we would then have those dollars available in the event. I know there's not consensus yet from the board on how to spend those dollars, but if we did want to spend a part of those dollars on roads, we would then have that additional amount, have more discretion on using those on roads or other capital improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. We ready for Mr. Shambles?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Go ahead, Mr. Mike.
Good morning still, Mr. Chairman and board members. We had very little change to the facility side of our capital program. We're still, we're still solid on our $1 million recommended immediate health and safety repairs. Grand jury obligation is still unchanged, but we did have a change in our requested projects. Elections brought to us two projects that have funding, and they both concern the election security. And I think we can all agree, especially in today's political environment in this country, that election security is extremely important. One of those is to install electronic access controls on doors to control access to rooms where critical equipment is kept. And another is to convert one of the old courtrooms into an indoor election space. Apparently, there's more political activity occurring in the environment near the elections office, and that can affect voting when people are voting outside. So, we're going to go ahead and recommend to convert a courtroom into indoor election space that's ADA accessible. There will be a hazardous materials component to that. Due to the age of construction on that building, there does exist hazardous materials that will be abated as part of that program.
And our elections officers, they're fine with that?
They're fine.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to.
He happens to be here, so that.
Yeah, that's.
Hand that off to him.
Perfect.
Year three primarily remains unchanged. Year four, we did include some juvenile hall improvements that got missed in our first run-through that are recommended, but, you know, as Benny said, this is one-year definite, you know, a work plan for the next four years.
Can I ask a question regarding the juvenile hall? With regards to juvenile justice, are we going to see conversion of some sort addition to the juvenile hall facility?
I know that all that is in flux, and I think that will affect these plans before they come to fruition.
I received, I received an email this morning asking me if we're closing juvenile hall, and I put a big old capital "no" with exclamation points, but obviously, the community is talking, and they're probably aware of the juvenile justice and the realignment, but not quite sure of the facts of what's happening, so I just want to make sure that I hear with the exclamation point that juvenile hall is not closing down.
I don't think I'm the appropriate person to answer those questions. I think.
Okay. But it's something that's in the works.
Law enforcement would be the appropriate person to answer those questions.
It's something that's in the works, that's coming in terms of some sort of change, reconfiguration.
Improvement?
For juvenile hall.
Facility improvements, I can speak to, yes.
Yes.
There are planned improvements for juvenile hall.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to turn it back over to Gabe now because I think that is his slide.
So, I want to, I want to thank Benny and Mike for covering the CIP projects and roads and for their slides on our presentation here today. and for their slides on our presentation here today. So we're nearing the end of my presentation here. I just have two last slides that I wanted to share with the chairman and the board and the community. And these relates to some scenarios that I'm, that I came up with in relation to what potentially we're going to be looking at at the end of the year. So the board has kind of an idea on some of the reasoning behind some of the either approved requests or denied requests as they kind of come along and why maybe some items might not make it to the published budget in June. So for instance, right here, I have three scenarios, A, B, and C. Scenario A is in consideration of just receiving last year's revenue while projecting out what our expenditures are going to look like this year. The second, the second graph here shows that the deficit, the difference between the two first columns here is going to be about $5.5 million. What that would mean is we would be eating, going back to our previous discussion, we would be eating our unassigned fund balance. Our unassigned fund balance is close to about $8 million. So we would be eating about $5.5 million out of that. Now, this is a very kind of unlikely scenario because this is taken into consideration that we're not going to be receiving reimbursement from FEMA. And some of these one-time expenditures are going to be just completely pulled out and we're not going to get any reimbursement. Now, the next scenario that I have here, Scenario B, is taken into consideration, we are going to be receiving reimbursement from FEMA and we're going to get funded from some of these expenses that were one-time. So what this shows is us just kind of barely squeaking by with expenditures that are coming just below our revenues. And that would be a very good scenario for us to land on. Our best scenario, which is kind of, I would, I would think of a dream if that were to happen, was we get our revenues to come in as, as we expected and even a little bit of growth. And then we would be getting reimbursement from FEMA and any of these other entities that we're expecting to receive funding from. Ideally and realistically, we'll probably end up somewhere between Scenario A and Scenario B. As we had discussed in the prior meeting on April 20th, from those projections, we were looking to come out somewhere along the lines of eating about $4.8 million. We would be coming up to a projected $4.8 million fund balance because we would be reducing about $3 million from our prior projections. So that $3 million number is kind of in line with our Scenario A and B from those early projections. And it looks like that's going to be what's going to be happening going forward. Ideally, like I mentioned, we would hope for the best, but we have kind of an idea on what we're going to look like going forward. And kind of one of my, the second and the last slide, so current budget status, what we're kind of presenting here. So the CEO's office is kind of recommending a status quo budget with very strategic investments with our available resources to both, to our roads or capital improvement projects, our personnel and our fixed assets. Some of these schedules are attached to this item and are going to be shared out with the departments to let them know where our areas of focus are going to be on. And ideally, we would want to make sure that we address any areas of concern before we publish this to the public on June 1st. And then the public will then have access to this information for them to ask questions if there's anything. And then everything should be addressed by the June 21st public hearing. So that pretty much completes my presentation. I want to thank again the board, the chairman of the board, the CEO, Benny and the RMA office, Mike. I want to also thank Joe Paul for his time and everything that he put towards, putting together these presentations. I appreciate everyone taking the time to come out here and listen and learn a little bit about the budget process and keeping this conversation running going forward as we kind of move towards completing this, this very engaging project.
Thank you very much. Any public comment?
I would call that perfect timing.
See none, we will. You can start now. Start the timer, please. When she says her first word, you can start.
Good afternoon. I could not have timed that more perfectly. It's awesome. Anyway, thank you for the reports today, they were great. I'm sure the three new supervisors learned a lot. I have heard all your questions. Again, based on the questions that were asked, because you're all new, you had great questions. And I will advocate that the position of the Board of Supervisors should be and must be a full-time position. Had you started full-time in January, you would have had five months of full-time to get on board, to know more about the process. So I really, really, I don't know what it's going to take. I know you guys did a study on it, the county's been working on this for a while. I've been up here, coming up here for years advocating for this. If you are a full-time position that gives you the time, right now, as new supervisors, you're realizing that you're putting in a lot of time. If you become a full-time position, it'll give you the opportunity to also find out and be on board and be the watched guy, the watchdog, sorry, for the female, I'll just keep it that. To make sure that you know what you, what's going on by the department heads. Right now, you are relying on the department heads to let you know what's going on. But you're not on top of what's going on daily, only when you ask questions or where a constituent comes up and you've got to go and you've got to get some answers. As a full-time position, you will have the opportunity. And I'm not saying that the department heads are not doing their jobs, but I'm also not saying that the department heads are doing their jobs. With regards to bringing on more employees, especially with the RMA department, because you were talking about that recently, just a little while ago. You already have the authority to hire somebody. People leave us all the time. This is the starting ground for a lot of people. How about, I know that the police department does it and there's other agencies that do it. You hire people on a bonus basis and they must be here on a contract to get that bonus for a certain period of time. I believe that the department heads are the only ones that know, and I'm not talking about the planning department and I'm not talking about the RMA, but I'm talking about the lower heads, they know how long their employees stay here. So I think you should consider that. Thank you.
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please press raise your hand icon or star nine on your phone. No comments.
Okay, we'll come back to the board. Being that it is a 1211, we can go ahead and hear the consent agenda. Oh, for the GAN chart? Is that what you were referring to, Barbara? Okay. Sorry about that, forgot. You want to give us some direction, Ray?
I need the mic too. So in the staff recommendation, your board obviously received the presentation and adopt resolution setting the GAN limit for fiscal year 21, 22, excuse me. That's the recommendation to your board.
Okay. Is there any questions on, from the board? Any motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution setting the GAN limit for fiscal year 21, 22.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero, motion passes. Thank you. Sorry about that, Barbara. Now we'll go to the consent agenda. You want to go ahead and read it out, Ray?
Yeah, sure. So this item obviously is on consent. So your board, if you want to, you want to hear it as a consent item or if you want to hear it as a regular item, it's your call, but it's a consent item, so, just like we pass all consents.
The only reason I'm saying read it is because it came in so late. I just want to be a little bit, you know, I'm just trying to be a little bit.
Yeah, so let me just share with you the background and then I'll pass it over to our county council's office that requested to put this on. So basically, this particular item is an ongoing item. There is a deadline prior to our next board meeting and the reason why it's here. We actually had put this on 20, we're trying to put this on 24 hours in advance as an amendment to this particular item, the agenda. There were some technical difficulties with the actual file, which delayed it till 12 o'clock posting. So we are within the limits now to hear this item based on the Brown Act. So with that, I'll go ahead and pass it to our county council.
This is just a matter that is required to extend the local emergency related to the flooding that occurred earlier this year. It has to be brought before the board every 60 days or it expires. And we want to make sure that it would, it had to come to today's date because it expires before the next board meeting.
Okay. Any questions from the board members?
Well, I think I'd like to add one thing, one comment to this as well is I'm going to, I have a meeting, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, with our lobbyist. I'm going to request that this item be pressed by our lobbyist to try to get some funding for us with regards to that. So I just wanted to share that with the board.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Well, any public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen. No comments.
See none, we'll bring it back to the board with the wish of the board.
I'll move that we approve consent item number one, the continued proclamation of a local emergency related to winter storm and flooding, January 26th to 28th.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero, motion passes. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.